Okay, we are going to call this meeting to order. If council could move to the dais, we're expecting the mayor any moment. But we're going to go ahead and get started. Madam Clerk?
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem Ashby.
Here.
Thank you, Councilmember Carr.
Here.
Councilmember Jennings.
Here.
Councilmember Warren.
Councilmember Harris.
Here.
Councilmember Shanier. I expect everyone else momentarily.
Very good. Do you want to make your announcements? And then we'll do the pledge of allegiance.
You want to do decorum or no?
You have your quorum. Do you want to make your announcement to the crowd about, yeah, decorum?
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. This meeting is being video streamed and can be viewed live or later on the city's website. Members of the public who wish to address the council should complete a speaker slip, which can be found at the back of the room. Speaker slips need to be turned in to the clerk prior to the beginning of each item. Please fully complete the speaker slip with name and any phonetic clarification and preferred pronoun so that everyone has the opportunity to address the council. Members of the public are asked to observe the rules of decorum. The council rules or procedure outlined decorum expected in the chambers and can be found on our website. A copy is in the back of the room and is summarized on the back of the speaker slip. For instance, use of swear words, yelling from the audience, physically threatening conduct, and displays of disrespect or discourage. The presiding officer will request that a person cease disruptive conduct and if not immediately stopped, the presiding officer will direct the person to leave the council meeting. Each speaker has two minutes to address the council. Please silence your cell phones or other communication devices and refrain from using flash photography or lights on video equipment. A cordless microphone, assisted lifting device, and parking validations are also available from the clerk.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Carr, would you lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, you want to call the first item?
The first item is FY 1920 Master Fee Schedule, Citywide Fees and Charges Update.
My name is Jason Bader with the Finance Department. The item before you is the Annual Citywide Fee and Charge Report. The citywide fee and charge policy establishes a process to add, modify, and delete fees and charges. It also sets the guidelines to determine cost recovery levels. All fees included in the report qualify as exceptions to Proposition 26, which prohibits the city from increasing taxes by defining them as fees. Staff is recommending adding 26 new fees, modifying 185 fees, and deleting 45 fees for a total of 256 changes affecting seven departments. These adjustments will generate approximately $284,000 of new revenue for the general fund and will reduce revenue for all other funds by $327,000. Convention and cultural services will no longer charge the community center theater facility fee due to the renovation project. This fee alone represents a $634,000 reduction in revenue despite fee increases to other aspects of operations. The associated revenue adjustments are necessary to provide appropriate cost recovery related to city programs and services, and this revenue has been included as part of the FY 1920 proposed budget. On April 30th, the Budget Audit Committee reviewed and recommended approval of all fee adjustments in the report. If you have specific questions, we have items, we have representatives from all seven departments here today. Staff is recommending that council pass a resolution approving citywide fee and charge adjustments. Thank you.
Jason, does that conclude your presentation? Thank you very much. This is a public hearing, though we have no members of the public signed up to speak. My colleagues have any questions? Councilmember Hanson.
Thank you, Madam Pro Tem. I just am catching up on something related to the Memorial Auditorium now that it's been reopened and we invested the $16 million in it. I was looking through this, and I didn't find it right away, but have we added the per-ticket fee that was being applied at the Community Center Theater to Memorial Auditorium during this period of time to help offset the cost of the improvements and to fund future improvements?
Not as part of this report. Matthew, are you?
Yeah, Matthew, would you? I had a tour recently, and it looks beautiful, but there's still a significant amount of deferred maintenance and restoration that's needed. And so, Mr. Voyer, welcome.
Good afternoon, Pro Tem. Members of the council, my name is Matt Voyer. I'm the General Manager. Councilmember Hanson, we're looking to come back to council in June to impose a new facility fee at the Memorial Auditorium for $3, and we'll be coming back next month.
Okay, great. So that answers the question. Thank you, Matt. Open and close the public hearing and move this item.
Moved and seconded, all in favor signify by aye. Aye. Any opposed or abstaining? Great, thank you. Thank you, Jason. Thank you, Matthew. Madam Clerk, next item.
Item number two is the 2019 to 2024 Capital Improvement Program, the CIP.
I believe there's a PowerPoint for this, Madam Clerk? Great, thank you.
Good afternoon, Mayor, and, well, not Mayor, but members of the city council. My name is Michael Tumayo with the Finance Department, and I'm here today to present to you the 2019 to 2024 Proposed Capital Improvement Program, or CAP. The CIP is the city's five-year financial plan for funding infrastructure and facility needs citywide in the areas of general government, public safety, convention, culture and leisure, parks and recreation, transportation, and city utilities. The five-year plan totals $284.9 million, including $45.8 million in general funds and $13.1 million in Measure U funds. Of that $284.9 million, $77.3 million is allocated for the upcoming fiscal year, 2019 to 2020. That amount includes $12.8 million in general funds and $3.6 million in Measure U funds. Some of the major projects and programs included in the FY 20 CIP include the following: the Body worn Camera Program, which will use Measure U funds to maintain the program, including necessary equipment and storage costs; and the Police Department Fleet and Equipment Technology Program, which will use Measure U funds to support the replacement of in-car cameras, install ballistic door panels on police vehicles as required by Cal OSHA, and upgrade mobile data computers from 3G technology to 4G, as 3G is being discontinued in December 2019. This funding is critical to sustain and continue these two programs. Additional programs include the Fire Station Replacement Program, Airfield Park Phase One, the Transportation Corridor Program, which will utilize SB 1 funds to improve pavement conditions, safety, and mobility options citywide, the Bell Avenue Complete Streets Rehabilitation Project, the Broadway Complete Streets Project, the Active Transportation Program, and the Residential Water Meter Program. A full list of projects included in the FY 20 CIP and in the five-year plan can be found in the Proposed CIP Book, which is available online. Additionally, there is a recommended technical change to the Proposed CIP. The city was able to issue the 2019 wastewater revenue bonds earlier than expected. As a result, the projects shown on the screen above have received funding through the bond proceeds in FY 19 and do not need to receive funding through the FY 20 CIP process. Staff therefore recommend removing these projects from the Proposed CIP. Lastly, I would like to thank department staff citywide who are involved in their development of the CIP for their support in helping the Finance Department put together this Proposed CIP. That concludes my presentation, and I and department staff are available to answer any questions.
Michael, is that your first presentation to council?
It is.
Very good. Thank you so much. We do have two members of the public signed up to speak. Madam Clerk, if you would call those names.
The first is Alicia Torres, then Rebecca Sandoval.
Ms. Torres, welcome.
Good afternoon. This is my first time, so.
Well, see, Michael, you're in good company.
Okay, so, I live in the North Gate area, and there, I've seen over, I've lived here my whole life, there's some real serious issues along the North Gate corridor there. The sidewalks have been built, you know, many, many, many years ago, and I drive through there all the time, every day. We've got the big city utility pole that's taking up, you know, a good portion of that sidewalk. I was coming home from shopping one day, and it just broke my heart. I saw an elder lady with her wheelchair on that sidewalk, and she got to the spot where there was the pole. And so, she's probably got maybe about a two, two and a half foot clearance, not even a three-foot clearance. She had her little grandson with him. They're trying to squeeze her through there. Well, her wheelchair rolled off that little, how it kind of has a little hill, and ended up in the bike trail area that was no bigger than the sidewalk. And we've got all this traffic coming down North Gate that's coming from all of Natomas off the 80, and I just saw the cars like so close to her, and I just cringed, you know, I was like, you know, as I went by, you could just see all that in a glance, and I thought, how dangerous was that? A little boy trying to maneuver his grandma in her wheelchair through that little spot? And again, you know, where are ADA rules? And is it still in compliance, being such an old sidewalk? And with that, the bike trail in itself is very narrow. I'd like to see those even be greened like they have in the Midtown area. So those are just some things that I thought that were serious. The other one part being the fences, they need the upgrades to walls like we see in the other parts of the Natomas area. We still have the really, really old fences. I don't know how they've got them propped up, but they're just about ready to collapse. That's such a popular area. We've got commuters coming through there every day, and to have it enhanced and look beautiful like the rest of the city would give us something just to be so proud for.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Ms. Torres, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Next speaker, Madam Clerk?
Our next speaker is Rebecca Sandoval.
Hello, Pro Tem Mayor and councilmembers. My name is Rebecca Sandoval, and I'm a member of the North Gate Advisory Group. The North Gate Advisory Group was formed by the Gardenland North Gate Neighborhood Association. We spent the last nine months reviewing plans done by the city and preparing and sharing our action plan for North Gate Boulevard. I am here to ask your support of North Gate Boulevard as you assess and select underserved corridors for your inclusive economic development program. We are underserved, but we have a tremendous untapped potential to be a more vibrant business corridor with your help. We have a high volume of fast traffic on North Gate Boulevard that is unsafe for pedestrians and bicyclists and makes shopping on North Gate Boulevard more difficult. I am also a trustee on the Twin Rivers School Board for that area. We have two elementary schools on that area. Our children, their safety is at risk. We have traffic going down there upwards of 70 miles an hour. We've experienced loss of our loved ones, including our children, as a result of North Gate Boulevard being unsafe. Our sidewalks are narrow and do not accommodate wheelchairs because of the poles in the middle of the sidewalks. They don't meet ADA standards. We have a lot of blight on North Gate Boulevard in terms of older and poorly maintained buildings, a wooden chain-link fence on the west side of the street, and trash due to lack of trash cans. And we have poverty in both North Gate and Gardenland community. But we have assets. Because of our Hispanic heritage, we have some great restaurants and stores. We also have restaurants and stores that serve other ethnic communities. We think this is an asset. The adjacent neighborhoods support our local businesses. We have a strong sense of community. We have businesses and people willing to help with many ideas to enliven the street.
Sandoval, Ms. Sandoval, your two minutes is complete.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you so much.
We have no more speakers. Ms. Mayor?
Okay, this is a receive and file item, but let's open it up to the, to the city council members. Councilmember Harris?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd just like to address the comments of the previous two speakers. North Gate is, in fact, an underserved corridor, and of course, it sits in District 3. The North Gate Advisory Group has been communicating with my office about all of their needs, and of course, they're all very real. I would say that I have engaged our economic development team. We're digging out the old plans. There have been plans for North Gate for quite some time, but they were never implemented. And like many underserved corridors in the city, you know, we're looking for funds to make good things happen. I totally appreciate your concern about the sidewalk and the utility poles erupting from it, because it is not ADA compliant. It's also an extremely expensive proposal to alter it, but that doesn't mean it's off the table. That means that we have to push harder for it, because there are safety concerns. We do have a stoplight that is in the CIP, actually, I believe, for Rio Tierra that will help in slowing traffic in that area of the schools, of Strau Elementary and Rio Tierra Middle School. So, we're moving in the right direction. We always need to move harder and move faster, but it is my pledge to nag that I will be a champion and try to find these funds and make these programs happen.
Thank you, Councilman Harris. Vice Mayor Geta?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just couldn't miss this opportunity to thank trustee Sandoval for all her work in the community there. She's one of the reasons that I got actually involved in, in community engagement and community outreach, so it's great to see her here and also fighting for the economic development of a rich history on North Gate Boulevard. So thank you guys for being here today.
Thank you, Councilman Geta. I know I have a question about the capital improvement program in the city, and just a little bit of education history for myself and maybe the community. This is, as the report indicates, the end of a 2019 through 2024 CIP. Is that correct? Mr. Cho, or Ms. Holm, either way?
That is correct.
That is correct. And as I understand it, in 2006, the city council authorized a general obligation bond that in part forms the basis of the 2019-24 CIP?
No, actually, Mayor, they asked, what we issued were capital improvement revenue bonds secured against our assets.
Okay.
And that was for about $100 million and--
What year was that?
2006.
And I don't need the information right now, but I think it would be helpful to get before the city council, between now and our council providing direction here, how that $100 million worth of revenue bonds, revenue bonds, capital improvement revenue bonds, were used since 2006 and what they actually funded in this community. Can, maybe off the top, if you can, can you highlight any of the projects that were funded through the use of this revenue bond?
We did Crocker. We did the two libraries. We did, we gave funding to some nonprofit organizations. We're Boys and Girls Club. We did $7.5 million in infrastructure improvements in North Sacramento. We did $1 million for District 1, as it was at the time, for some, for community investments. We have a full list. The council actually voted and did a dot voting exercise to identify those projects, so we have that list we can provide you.
I'd appreciate if you would refer back, and now that we're sitting in 2019, it's true that we're coming to the very end, the last proceeds from the $100 million capital bond from 2006, correct?
Correct. I mean, we haven't had, we actually haven't been allocating any resources for several years.
I understand. We don't have much money left from that original $100 million--
Right.
--to invest in the community. Thank you. We'll receive and, we'll receive and file the report. Is there a vote needed on the receive and file? Okay, very good. Thank you. Let's move on to item number three.
My name is Daniel Cho, Interim Budget Manager. The item before you is the Consolidated Budget, Budget Report. The Consolidated Budget Report covers all departments except for fire, police, and youth, parks, and community enrichment. And there will be separate presentation for youth, youth park, and community enrichment this afternoon, followed by this presentation, and then parks and police in the evening. With the consolidated departments in this report, we added 30 FTEs and programs at a cost of $11.7 million, and of which five FTEs were offset by revenues and/or service and supplies. HR, Human Resources Department budget includes a citywide comprehensive review of outdated job classifications, which supports city's effort to eliminate barriers in attracting a diverse workforce and reflecting modern job duty statements. Additionally, staff resources were added to address workload growth in employment services and labor relations. IT budget includes funding to expand student internship program, as well as funding for licenses and viral replacement to detect and stop threats to the city's network and protect digital assets. Public Works budget includes the following programs: homeless mitigation and illegal dumping activities, as well as sustainable energy program funding for city facilities and maintenance of city libraries. Convention and cultural services includes $55,000 for downtown partnership to provide additional waterfront programming. And the Community Development Department budget includes animal care volunteer program coordinator position, and this position will coordinate over 3,000 volunteers, providing 106,000 volunteer hours. And ensure, I'll be turning it over to Assistant City Manager Jasso, who will be making a detailed presentation on inclusive economic development initiative proposed in the City Manager's Office budget and remainder of the Community Development Department budget. And I would like to note that consistent with the city's plan to address library fund, library funding shortfalls, this budget includes $18.9 million for the city's libraries, and this represents a $750,000 increase in general fund contributions with an addition of $1.8 million over the remaining years of the forecast. And augmentation for other funds include 14 FTE positions and equipment at a cost of $3.6 million. Staff resources were added to address regulatory and maintenance requirements for these enterprise fund departments. With, with the passage of Measure K, the City Auditor's Office was established as a charter office, and the duties of the City Auditors and the independent budget analysts were combined. And additionally, HR Information Systems Unit moved to the IT Department in an effort to streamline HR system support. And please, I would like, please note that a council workshop has been added to May 28, and staff will be bringing forward council required information to date. And now I'd like to turn it over to Assistant City Manager Jasso, who will be making a detailed presentation on inclusive economic development initiatives.
Mr. Jasso, welcome.
Perfect, thank you. Good afternoon, Mayor, members of the council. I'm Michael Jasso, Assistant City Manager. So first of all, thank you for the opportunity to present a combined 2019-20 budget overview for the Office of Innovation and Economic Development, the Department of Community Development, and the Department of Convention and Cultural Services. As we embark on an inclusive economic development agenda, it's important to acknowledge that the implementation of that agenda spans more than just the direct budget requests that I and the team will here describe. It touches areas of youth and parks, public safety, public works, to name a few others, within the proposed budget, as well as entities separate from the city, such as SHRA, SETA, schools, and libraries. Our budget request focuses support and investments to reinforce our commitment to building people, businesses, and place capabilities throughout all of Sacramento. Furthermore, we strive to ensure opportunities exist for all and will result in greater economic growth for residents, businesses, neighborhoods, and youth in Sacramento. As we provide, as we present our combined budget requests, you will note that we have focused on additions that build the city's internal capacity to effectively engage our communities and work with our businesses, nonprofits, and institutional partners in developing, in developing and implementing strategies, programs, and projects that are responsive to the unique challenges and opportunities that we know exist in our varied communities. With that said, I would like to collectively recognize many of the staff leaders that are here today and who will carry out this inclusive economic development agenda as we move forward. If I can have a staff from the three areas just stand, be recognized? Great, thank you, thank you. The main purpose was demonstrate that people do matter in the work we do moving forward. Okay. So in order to understand where we're going, I think it is instructive just to take a quick look at where we are. So in 2018, in the 2018-19 base budget for the Office of Innovation and Economic Development, it was budgeted at $3.1 million and 16 FTEs, full-time equivalents, and some of the most noticeable accomplishments have been some of the recent kind of announcements and groundbreakings, such as announcement of the, the moving forward of the Centene Corporation, the Powerhouse Science Center on the riverfront, and the Hyatt Centric at 7th and L. Additionally, we awarded almost $900,000 in funding for 14 different projects through the Rails Grant Program. In 2018-19, the base budget for Community Development Department was $38.9 million with 218 FTEs. Some of those notable accomplishments were actually moving forward in the permitting and entitlements of important projects, such as Centene, which I've mentioned, Crocker Village, and incredibly important to the future of this city, the Convention Center In 2018-19, the base budget for Convention and Cultural Services was $20.3 million with 115 FTEs. The most notable, the notable accomplishments included obviously moving forward with the Sacramento Convention Center, kind of the rehabilitation of Memorial Auditorium, and the ongoing work for the Community Center Theater. Equally important was the completion and adoption of the Creative Edge Plan for the Significant work was undertaken in 2018 until now to take the pulse of the Sacramento economy. These findings have indicated a city and a region with significant real, kind of real assets and a relatively high degree of prosperity when compared to the nation's 100 largest metro areas. We are, however, also facing many significant challenges looking forward into the future. These troubling trends include slow growth in our tradable sectors, which generally determine a region's long-term potential for growth, a relatively high degree of educational and digital skill deficit among many of our residents, resulting in Black and Latino workers being underrepresented in median and high digital occupations that are increasingly defining the nation and the state's economic future, other structural barriers such as the absence of affordable and accessible childcare, which limits career pathways and opportunities, all of which have and will continue to limit our ability to build and grow a competitive workforce that will determine the long-term prosperity of our region and As a result, over the past year and a half, the city's manager's office--
Question?
Yes.
I'm sorry. I didn't want to interrupt, but just on that point quickly, Mr. Jasso, could you, could you tell us in this plan what is there for the childcare proposal? I know this has come up a couple times already.
Sure, and I was going to elaborate a little further. So, we recognize the importance of childcare and addressing affordable childcare as, as, as a way of lowering barriers that hinder access to jobs, good-paying jobs, and accessibility. So one of the things we are doing is within the, within economic development, we are adding a number of economic development managers that are, that are kind of like generally defined for the work they will be doing. We fully expect that they will be taking on as priorities topical areas, one of them obviously being childcare, as engaging stakeholders, working on a plan, and if the result of that work calls for specifically the addition of a full-time person, we fully expect to support that and bring that forward.
Just to make sure I understand it correctly, so one of the additional positions in economic development will have in their job duties the scope--
That's correct.
--of childcare? And then if that position, if that becomes an overwhelming component to that position, then we will add a specific individual for childcare only?
Our intent would be to support that request at that time.
Okay, great, thank you.
Could I clarify just one point on that too, Mayor?
Yep.
So will that person be titled childcare coordinator or will be economic development manager?
So right now, it's an economic development manager. If and when we reach that point through the kind of working with the stakeholders, et cetera, we think at that point, it would obviously make sense to kind of title that person directly with, I don't know what that title would actually be, but we would have to figure that out with HR.
So, I would just follow up, and we can have this conversation more later, but at one point, the city had a childcare coordinator prior to the recession, and so I think one of the things that came up from Councilmember Gera and now Councilmember Ashby is whether we're restoring that and Measure U as a restoration item as much it is inclusive. So, we can talk about that more, but I'd encourage you to think about how to restore that service--
Agreed, and thank you for bringing that up. I mean, I probably am okay with it-- it being a specified job duty of an individual, but I think it's really important, and I wouldn't want it to be minimized or some slighted item, so somehow-
I think we would agree if we were moving to a full-time position at that right point in time, it is important that the job description-
But prior to that, even in this budget as adopted, to have my support, I want to make sure that that, there is a position in economic development that in their job title is child core coordination. Thank you.
Okay, please continue.
So as a result, over the past year and a half, the city's manager's office has worked with the mayor and council to begin to take action. We built on those actions in our 2019-20 budget requests, in primarily focusing on the addition of much-needed staff to create the internal infrastructure we need to engage our businesses and resident communities on the development and implementation of local responsive strategies, programs, and projects that will move the needle on the challenges, on the challenges which I've just mentioned. Included on the bug timeline are noted, are noted are some of the actions we have taken together, some of the most notable being an adoption supporting the principal findings of Project Prosper, the further adoption of a draft framework to guide us moving forward, and specific council action at mid-year to launch business and community capacity-building efforts as we can only be successful with robust partners in the community. Moving forward, we'll be following four high-level principles. First, as we look to at our neighborhoods and places, we will examine and act on opportunities to make our neighborhoods healthy, safe, and vibrant. We will actively engage our communities, ensuring their voice and input is reflected. We will be focused on strategies and tactics to expand meaningful employment opportunities. We will support business expansion at the local level and the growth of industry clusters that will afford all our residents long-term employment opportunities. Before you use the summary of the combined budget augmentation requests that will be presented in greater detail by some of my, some of the staff here today, some of the highlights are the creation of a Neighborhood Development Action Team with 13 FTEs and 3.2 million ongoing in terms of support. These teams will focus on opportunities to advance investment and development in two or four neighborhoods each year, as well as supporting generally our work throughout the city. Additionally, economic development managers will be added as part of this team, but will also focus, as I just mentioned, on issues of imports such as working on workforce development and affordable childcare strategies. The development of Financial Empowerment Center, we are requesting 300,000 of one-time funding to provide financial counseling to low-income residents. Everyone here is familiar with the work that we've announced in terms of supporting kind of investments on the old Sacramento waterfront. As part of that, we're requesting 300,000 in one-time funding to enable planning and design tasks critical to moving development of the project to its next phases. And finally, we're requesting 500,000 in one-time funding to proceed with the implementation of key initiatives and projects such as the California Mobility Center and corridor development, which we'll expand upon shortly. I would now like to ask our Director of Planning Development, Tom Pace, to come up and specifically speak to the Neighborhood Development Action Team. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. Tom Pace, Planning Director. So as we think about the neighborhood component of the principles that were just outlined, our goal is to improve the development prospects for our commercial corridors, transit station areas, and other key neighborhoods. The proposed team will consist of staff from planning, economic development, and will work with other departments to undertake a new activity that we're not currently staffed for. The teams will, the team will include efforts to implement two to four neighborhood plans per year for inclusive economic development, affordable housing, and transit-oriented development. The plans will be prioritized based on criteria adopted by the city investment committee, including areas that are identified as our environmental justice areas, disadvantaged communities, our promise zone, and other areas that have not received adequate investment in the past. And we will be building on public input that we've already received, including council's policy direction for inclusive economic development and prior community engagement Key benefits of the Neighborhood Development Action Team include an ability for us to identify needed infrastructure, zoning, and environmental clearance necessary to streamline planned development in these areas. We'll also be able to prepare these areas for local, regional, state, and federal funding, improve transportation choices, identify investments in local businesses and community amenities, and increase housing choices for all incomes. Now I will turn it over to Jody.
Good afternoon, Jody Ulrich, your Convention and Cultural Services Director. Talking about your funding for arts and culture and the creative economy, so the city's funding contribution to Sacramento Metropolitan Arts Commission generally comes from the 2% TOT allocated to the general fund. Prior to the recession, the city was allocated, allocating 0.5% of the funding to SMAC, and currently, if you looked at it in this year's budget, it would be 1.29 million dollars. With the funding this year, it comes from a number of different areas, but if you include the one-time funding being recommended of $580,000, happy to report that the allocation for Sacramento Metropolitan Arts Commission would total 1.3 million dollars from various areas. So that finally, since 2008, I believe, gets it back to the funding allocation that we had been looking at pre-recession. In addition to that, there is an augmentation request for the Sacramento Film Office, and this would be to establish a film office here in the municipal government. We are currently doing a study and working with Visit Sacramento in terms of moving that over to the city, and I'm happy to say that there is that investment into the Sacramento Film Office.
Don't interrupt, but I know Councilmember Hanson had a question.
I just wanted to clarify something, Jody. We're showing here the things that are being proposed, but not the things that are not being proposed. And so I'm just, I want to clarify, we're not proposing in the current budget that you're presenting, the cultural equity grants, the creative edge funding, or any of those other things that we previously funded, right?
Well, as a clarification, so the $580,000 that is one-time funding, that would primarily go to cultural equity grants, creative economy grants, probably youth community center funding. It is one-time funding that would go to exactly those kind of grants tied to the creative edge.
And, and where's the detail on that in the budget, how that breaks down? Because I know we did a half a million dollars for cultural equity grants last year, another half a million for, gosh, my, my brain is-
Creative economy.
Yeah, creative economy. That's a million, so here you're saying that 580 is up for several things. Is there somewhere in the budget book that breaks that down?
We don't have it, yeah, we don't have it specified.
Yeah, I guess the apples-to-apples is confusing, and that's where, maybe when we come back later, Mayor, I can ask.
Can I, I mean, I think, what I feel is that while it's a good start, it's not enough money, that we've got to get up to, I think, at least 2.2 million dollars as part of this year's budget as the base before we get into the broader Measure U discussion, depending on the direction that the city council sets. But I think we want to try to follow the direction of the master plan and to not have to, within reason, because the needs are much greater than 2.2 million dollars, to have these internal competitions between some very promising approaches that we have together piloted over the last several years.
Well, and Mayor, I guess the reason I asked the specific question is I can't tell what's direct support for artists other than the particular match to the county grant funding, and that's the only one that clearly says grant funding. And I know the grants particularly goes directly to the artists and arts organizations, and that's where I think we're going to have to drill into this more, but I know there are other people with questions, so you've clarified that, so thank you.
Agreed, and when it's one-time funding, I will tell you, we will not, almost as a, just a matter of policy, put it into a general operating support, which is ongoing support. It would need to go into the freestanding programs we have, like the creative economy, the cultural equity grants.
Thank you. Okay.
All right.
Continue with your presentation. We were, it's like the court here, we interrupt the litigants here.
That's the, the last thing I had was the film office, so we're, you know, pleased that that investment is moving forward.
Councilmember Bagueta, did you want to wait until the public testimony, or did you want to?
I can wait till we're done with the, all of our staff presentations of public testimony.
Okay, very good. Okay, next.
Melissa Angiano. Good afternoon, Melissa Angiano, Economic Development Manager. So the Community Engagement Division request is included in the Neighborhood Development Action Team, but we thought it was really important to pull it out and really explain kind of what we're hoping to achieve with this new division. Over the last couple of years, we've recognized a void in how the city connects with the community. We also acknowledge the need for new and innovative solutions to connecting with Sacramento. Community engagement today is different and should be. This newly-formed Community Engagement Division will be responsible for establishing programs and processes to enhance collaboration throughout our community. This approach reconnects with Sacramento while seeking new opportunities to enhance the type of community collaboration that is needed to address priority issues for the city. With this focus, we start to value the process as much as the products of engagement. Overall, this division will strive to establish a real sense of participation, encourage new people to get involved, inspire new thinking, and catalyze partnerships. This division will serve a critical role for the city as a lead partner in conducting community engagement strategies and connecting stronger connections with business owners, neighborhood leaders, community members, and partner organizations throughout all of Sacramento. By creating stronger links, we ensure our work and implementation is tailored to the priorities of our neighborhoods in ways that aren't business-as-usual. Through leadership with close work, through leadership and close work with council, city departments, local partners, and community and business stakeholders, we can be instrumental in changing the way our city does business by making community engagement a core element in implementing and delivering priority policies, projects, and programs. Back to Mike.
Thank you, Melissa. So as we move forward, no investments will be more important than those we make directly into building the skills and capacity of our now and future workforce, and what we do to promote business development, retention, and attraction. Including in our budget request is funding for the creation of a Financial Empowerment Center, which will be made possible through $300,000 of funding from the city over two years, which is likely to leverage another 600,000 of funding from private funders, including Bloomberg and Citibank. The center will be hiring a contract person to run it and will contact, contract with nonprofit operators, who will have three to five financial counselors on staff, providing high-quality, one-on-one financial education and counseling to improve the financial stability of low-income residents. Another example of the city building on and investing in initiatives that have the potential to transform our local economy is our request for funding for the development and implementation of the California Mobility Center. We are continuing to push towards becoming an outlet for autonomous driving systems companies via the city's ATOs initiative, and have now engaged a full-time consultant to work via the city's, to work, a full-time consultant to work with partners such as Smod, SAC State, GSEC, Pem Ahin, which is an existing and proven e-mobility industry accelerator in Germany. These two efforts have helped to bring together a coalition that has resulted in Smod, most recently, just this past week, approving $15 million of funding toward an implementation of the project here in Sacramento. And finally, I'd like to turn this over to Lewis Stewart, who can speak to some of the efforts we are doing to support entrepreneurship and innovation in the Sacramento economy.
Good afternoon. Over the past 24 months, I've been working as the city's chief innovation officer to enhance Sacramento's innovation ecosystem, and it's begun to bear fruit. The focus has been around inclusive growth in all areas of the city in the following sectors: mobility, clean tech and sustainability, food systems, cybersecurity and Internet of Things, government policy, civic tech, workforce development, health IT, and life science. Startups, venture capital firms, industry leaders are coming to, to us to build on programs initially established by the council under the Innovation Growth Fund. We're co-developing with companies. We are working with companies to demonstrate the viability of their products and services and provide access to all citizens. The city has made a commitment to inclusive economic development. The program's in front of you as part of the Innovation Growth Fund budget, a part of building an environment that can successfully retain and grow talent and businesses in the community. We intend to continue building on the Rails Program with Bill Black and work with partners like SVP and Miss T, who I saw here, to build out the food, art, and tech aspects of the city through innovation. The Entrepreneurship Development Academy is working with current Rails grantees to grow the pitch capabilities of entrepreneurs in underrepresented communities, to working with a mentorship platform that cities like New York and Los Angeles have adopted, to provide less barrier to entry to get to mentors. The Economic Gardening and Seeding Grants is to take second-stage, five-to-99 company, five-to-99-person companies, minority and women-owned businesses, and get them catalyzed to the next level of their business, partnering with, with the National Foundation. And lastly, through the Sacramento Innovation Stories, it's really looking at the marketing and building on how we branded the city as a Sacramento Urban Technology Lab and creating this living laboratory, laboratory environment that companies are starting to seek out to work with us in partnership. And that actually concludes our collective presentation. I'd like to pass it back to Michael for questions.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Michael. I know we got council thoughts and comments on, it's very promising proposals here, but let's, let's take the public testimony first, and then we'll turn it back to the council. Unless member wants to ask a question, no. Councilman Carr?
Yes, thank you, Mayor.
Okay.
I got it.
Got it.
Can you go back to your second slide? That one.
The second, uh-
Third one, then, that one.
Uh-huh.
You say we rank in the bottom third of the 100 largest MSAs in ranking, measuring growth, prosperity, and inclusion. All of these activities that you've just briefed us about, are they going to take us out of the bottom third? Is that the metric that we should use to determine if those activities actually create the result that we are investing in?
It's, it's certainly one of the metrics. So the, the presentation you have in front of you and some of these measures are specifically, not solely, from the work that the Brookings Institutions did. So clearly, that's one measure, one, how do we kind of move our, our kind of citizens as a whole, whether it's employment, whether it's in poverty, to better places, certainly from where we are. It's a little bit tough when you benchmark against other cities, because they're also moving up and down and so on, but clearly, we should benchmark ourselves in the sense of, do we have fewer people in poverty? Do we have more unemployment? Do we have better degree attainment? Do we have better wage growth, kind of, et cetera? And those are the things that when we kind of move forward, we brought forward a framework in October that included some of the metrics and quality life measures that we should hold ourselves accountable, both over the long term, kind of, has poverty moved on the needle? Has employment moved on the needle? But also, in the short term, on specific programs and projects. So all of those things will be things that we will evaluate both at the project level, but also at the larger macro level. Now, clearly, in one year, it's tough to move the needle in kind of one of those macro kind of levels, so we know this is a long-term proposition, but we, we want to make sure that we're making meaningful investments that's doing that. So our port, our support for the California Mobility Center kind of is very important because it does have the potential to, to position Sacramento as a true leader in a very important industrial, kind of, kind of industry cluster that will help define this country and the world. So that's one example, but yes, it, some of those kind of measures you were speaking to are the things we should benchmark ourselves.
So we should, we should benchmark our growth, prosperity, and inclusion. We should use that as the benchmark as to whether or not we are being successful in this investment?
It's one of the measures, yes.
What, what metric would you use?
Well, so for instance, in terms of the lowest one-third, that doesn't parse into the individual, so for instance, depending on where the nation's going, et cetera, because, right, that measure is a comparative to the nation as a whole, we could still move, but still be in that bottom one-third. So it's kind of, so it's important that that's part of it, but we also need to look at and, and measure our own. So for instance, I don't specifically, and I should know this number, what the poverty rate in Sacramento is here today. That's an absolute measure. We should use that as one measure over time, have we moved more people out of poverty? That may or may not have implications as we look at as national competitors in the 100, so it's clearly one of the things.
Could you provide me with those measures and where we stand now, so I will be able to determine if we are actually moving the needle-
Sure.
-with any of this investment?
Be happy to do that. We will further be elaborating on that in terms of the economic development plan that we expect to bring forward to council. They were working- we expect to bring forward to council that we're working on now, so.
Okay, I don't want the plan, I just want to know what we're measuring.
Understood. Thank you.
A question, Councilmember Schneer.
Yeah, thank you. So, I think this is all great, and to me, what you're doing is building infrastructure for the future. There's not a lot of project dollars in here, right? This is about how do we get to the place where we can be successful when, as those things come, and I'm sure we're going to have much more conversation about that over the next couple of weeks. What I am interested in, Michael, is as your team continues to evolve, and I assume it will as you learn more about what you're doing and how to do it, and I don't need an answer now, but I want to, I want to make sure that you're still connected to all the council offices as you do things, because we all have things going on in our neighborhoods. We know what projects are, what the needs are, so I just want to make sure that we're aligned in the work that we do, for me, as a council office, when you're working on Stockton Boulevard, or in Oak Park, or things like that.
Sure, and I can't answer right now. We couldn't agree more that we do need to be very cognizant about where you are as individual council members, how you see the needs in your communities, and so on. It's a critically important voice, because at the end of the day, anything we bring for implementation really should be supported by you and understood by you, kind of, as to how it benefits your communities. So, I'll make that commitment right now.
Councilmember Warren, did you want to ask a question now, or did you want to? Go, of course.
What Councilman Carr brought, what he mentioned, I think is very important and relevant, and I would like to understand also, you know, kind of, we're starting at a point, we've identified ourselves as being in the bottom third, you know, of, I'm assuming, cities like Sacramento, you know? Or is this nationwide, every city is all thrown into a bucket, and we're in the bottom third?
So, that was, so those are kind of macro figures based on the 100 largest metropolitan areas in the United States. So, it does include cities such as New York and Los Angeles, and, but it also includes smaller cities than Sacramento.
But what I think is really important, though, is that we have a true measuring stick, so we, so we know what our objectives are. You know, if, obviously, our objectives are to improve, but for instance, you know, what are the top-third cities? What are they doing? How did they get there? How do we take the best practices and the most efficient route to, you know, to improving our status? And I guess I'm just not hearing a real clarity in taking one approach over another approach. I know we came to this approach by some measure, and so I'd like to get, as Councilman Carr said, more detail as to, you know, really, we know what our objective is, right? We want to be a great city. We want to, we don't want to be in the bottom one-third, we want to be in the top one-tenth, you know, of all cities, if not the, if not the top. How do, how do we get there? Give us a roadmap as to how we improve from where we are today, and then give us some level of detail that says, this is how we got to these conclusions, and how we expect to progress as a city. I mean, we're investing tens of millions of dollars, and everybody is, every dollar, every dollar, there's a hand somewhere in this city that's raised for that dollar. So, we need to be as efficient as possible, you know, with our budget dollars, and I'd like to get a clearer picture as to how we're going to change our status from where we are now to, you know, becoming a leader in these various categories.
Sure, two quick observations. One is that we will be coming back to council with a much more detailed economic development plan, which will, in fact, look at on a neighborhood basis, the kinds of things, kind of, and opportunities we see, and how do we move the needle in neighborhoods and things that matter. So, we will be getting into that kind of granularity of, kind of, to your point, which is, you know, kind of, real things that move the, kind of, move us forward. I also do want to stress, because while I may have glanced over it, the call to action here was not meant to imply a doom-and-gloom scenario for the city of Sacramento. We do have tremendous assets, both in terms of people, in terms of the fact that we are a government city, or heavily historically been a government city, is both a plus and a minus. So, the plus is, we are the capital of the most kind of economically kind of advancing state in the Union, and one that would stand as a significant economy on its own. There's a reason for things to happen here, so we know there are lots of pluses. What I'm saying is that we are underperforming and not really doing as good as I think we collectively know we can in diversifying our economy, growing jobs that pay to the future, and in fact, our kind of jobs that can take you anywhere, not just here in Sacramento. So, we know that there's, so I just want to be clear that it's not all, by any means, meant to portray.
Not doom and gloom, it's an opportunity.
Absolutely.
So, Councilman Warren, can I just pick up briefly on this, your Councilmember Carr and Councilmember Schneer's comments, and we'll turn it over to the public testimony. Councilmember Schneer, I think, said something important, and I want to, you know, there's been a lot of maybe confusion, or at least back and forth, we're talking about current year, out years, the back and forth that is creating a lot of conversation in the community. So, I want to be clear about a couple of things. I want to thank and commend the city manager and Assistant City Manager Jasso for the foundation they have laid here for a robust economic development role for our city, because you need to embed it, if you will. You need to lay that foundation. You need to have leadership around housing, and around neighborhoods, and around creative, the creative economy and arts. You need all of that. So, it is absolutely necessary, and it's the proper foundation. The argument, if you will, or the debate that we are having here at the city, is whether or not it is sufficient. And what I believe, and what I think I hear from at least a number of members, is that there are two other key elements here. One, or two, because the foundation is first, two is the programmatic resources, the investments, both capital and operating, to be able to ensure that the new people you are hiring actually have some ability to drive an agenda, that's two. And three, Councilmember Carr and Warren, are the metrics, are what it is we're driving towards, what, how it is we choose to measure ourselves. We started this with Project Prosper, by the way, we just didn't complete it, but now we can pick it up again. And it is, it is the, it is the issues, in my view, around poverty, and around opportunity, and around housing, and around all of the negative indicators that we're concerned about and that motivated this agenda in the first place. So, let's be clear, this is a very important and good and great foundation here, because it does show a city commitment. So, thank you, Mr. City Manager. The question we are debating is, then what? What do you match with it? And I suggest, what I hear here, is that you need to match real investment, and you need to have a metric and a set of metrics that drive your investment strategy. So, thank you. Let's, let's hear from the public here.
Mr. Mayor, I have 20 speakers signed up. The first one is Liv Mo, then Ed Fletcher, then Lou Visomara.
Mayor, members of council, I think this is the first time I've ever been first, so I don't have to wait nervously for 45 minutes to get up here. Mayor Steinberg, I just wanted to thank you for suggesting that we do raise the investment to 2.2 million. This is music to my ears after all the dialogue that's been going on for the last couple of months. I think bridging off of the conversation that was just happening about what would be measurable and what's actually going to happen that will make a difference, I can speak from experience just in the growth of my own organization, how much has been possible with the investments that we've gotten from the city to date. So, I actually have pretty quick comments today after what I've heard from the DIA, so I just want to thank all of you for continuing to push this issue forward.
Our next speaker is Ed Fletcher, Lou Visomara, then Sheri Meyer.
Greetings, council and mayor. Ed Fletcher, I'm a former reporter at Sacramento Bee, currently an arts activist, and producing a documentary called Do the Dance. I appreciate the comments in support of increasing the arts funding for this budget year going forward. I think there were a lot of people that participated in the creative edge process that feel a little bit like the floor's been taken out from underneath them, that we're at risk of losing momentum, the council's at risk of losing credibility, and we're losing potential economic impact if we don't fully implement the creative edge process. I forgot to wear reds, but there's a lot of people here that are wearing red today that are speaking up for, for the arts. I don't mean to interrupt the flow of your meeting, but I did want to make sure that all of their voices are heard. I would like to...
You're red.
I forgot.
Red.
I know. Busy day, I'm going to LA later today to shoot for the documentary. Anyway, I want to make sure that I offer my voice in support of this, and I want to encourage you to look back at the budget, and if not the mayor's creative, bold solution, then some solution that moves us closer to fully funding the creative edge process. Thank you for your time.
Lou Visomara, then Sheri Meyer, then Jerry Camillos.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and Honorable City Council Members. My name is Lou Visomara, and I'm here requesting the city to adopt a $2.2 million budget for the arts to help fulfill the mayor's initiative with the Creative Edge Culture Plan. I'd like to share three perspectives as to why this is a crucial investment in the future success and development of our city, of our families, and our communities. As a member of the Metro Arts Commission, I've heard and witnessed compelling stories as to how the arts have improved the lives of countless individuals across the lifespan. This slide is an example of the eclectic and diverse organizations that have been funded by our commission. The next projection identifies key economic indicators in California that are related to the arts. The arts are a bigger share of America's GDP than construction or agriculture. On average, for every dollar invested into the nonprofit arts, $6 are generated in taxes. Thus, investments in the arts not only nurtures our souls, but it improves our economy. As a physician and also a parent of a young adult son with autism, and the co-founder of the UC Mind Institute, I've been extremely interested in cognitive development. The neuroscience has now clearly established that early child exposure to the arts enhances intellectual function and brain development. A prime example of this concept is the Harmony Project, which in 2001 was started in LA as a public health intervention, specifically to invest in the positive development of children through the study, practice, and performance of music, to build healthier communities, and by help having children as ambassadors. Music, the Harmony Project is best impacted, is best summarized by a student who summarized that music has crafted me into someone that I take pride in being.
Thank you for your comments, your two minutes is complete.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Sheri Meyer, Jerry Camillos, and Vincent Demanovic.
Hi, Dean.
Mayor Steinberg, honorable council members, my name is Sheri Meyer, I'm the dean of the College of Arts and Letters at Sacramento State, a board member of Sacramento Philharmonic and Opera, and a member of the Steering Committee for the Creative Edge. I advocate on behalf of the arts because I believe strongly in their power to contribute to the economic and cultural well-being of our city. The arts bring diverse people together in positive ways, they attract new visitors and residents to our communities, and they enrich our lives of our citizens in equitable and productive shared experiences. Today, I represent the thousands of students, faculty, and staff who work, learn, and create within the university and in our communities. This past Friday, we celebrated as over 1,000 graduates in the arts and humanities prepared to enter the workforce as teachers, business people, government workers, artists, musicians, filmmakers, designers, dancers, and so much more. They cross the stage with the pride and hope in their future and their families' futures in Sacramento. So, I'm here today to express my deepest concern regarding the proposed city budget of the arts, and to implore you to reconsider and bring it in line with the $2.2 million alternative budget that you've heard. Last year, as we listened to our artists, business people, and residents from across various sectors, they expressed genuine concern that the city would once again let the community down by ignoring the plan or insufficiently funding it. As an administrator, I understand that all budgets are based on difficult decisions and sometimes conflicting priorities, but I beg you not to underestimate the value of and potential return on your investment in the arts. Innovation, entrepreneurship, and other creative solutions to the problems facing our city can and will be advanced through and by the arts, but only if the city provides the fiscal foundation upon which we can build our creative edge. Thank you.
Thank you, Sheri.
Jerry Camillos, Vincent Demanovic, and Tricia Romberg.
Good afternoon, I'm Jerry Camillos. I'm the vice president of the Friends of the Sacramento Arts and co-board president of the Sacramento Ballet. I gave, your handout is a four-minute speech, so I'll spend the next two minutes highlighting it. The, I was really excited, and gave me a lot of hope to see the arts, the arts Creative Edge Plan adopted last year by this council. It was 20 years ago that such a strategic plan was adopted, and I was the chair of the commission that initiated the two-year study that produced that plan. At that time, the commission's budget was $1.4 million. If you inflate it to today's dollars, the commission's budget should be $2.5 million, and that's why we're here, or I'm here today, to advocate for the $2.2 million requested. Taking on Council, Councilman Warren's and Councilman Carr's comments about what can make Sacramento even better than what it is today, and that's getting every woman, man, and child engaged in the creative community, and not, and not create blocks or deterrents from those, that engagement. And that's what your plan does, it gets to the community, gets to the neighborhoods, and that's what's exciting about it. In our public educational system, which is financially impacted, focused on the tenets of standardized tests to ensure state funding, there is limited pathways for our mainstream students to learn. Often, we, we speak in terms of problem-solving with ethnic diversity, gender diversity, social disparities, homelessness, and economic disparities. The arts are inclusive and can be easily engaged by all, yet rarely we grow our creative and innovative class through the arts.
Thank you for your comments, your two minutes is complete.
Jerry, thank you so much. We do, we do have your written testimony to be part of the record, and thank you for coming today. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Vincent Demanovic, then Tricia Romberg, then Tamara Sandifer.
Mayor, members of council, Vincent Demanovic, I'm the owner of Vanguard Effects Studio. First, I'd like to acknowledge Mr. Chan and his team for their impressive amount of work in creating this budget, it's no small feat. And in light of being presented with critical feedback, I encourage you to factor and make room for that in your revised budget plan, because the creative community here is a vital engine, essential to the economic health of our city. And without a substantial budget increase that is inclusive, we throw to waste the tremendous amount of hard work that has gone into laying down this pivotal foundation for our city to successfully launch from. The key thing to remember here is the creative economy is about making core investments in our city's sustainable future. If I said the cost of passing the current budget would be that everyone in Sacramento would not be able to access any books, TV, no music, no movies, for just six months, without question, you would go back and you'd find a way to seriously include the creative economy because you already value it that much. You know, last week, I was at a meeting with Senator Ben Allen, Joint Committee on the Arts, and it was all about bringing education equity into the jobs pipeline. Another significant aspect, by the way, of the creative economy, it is a fact, creative industry-based jobs are on the rise. We know this, and we need to be ready. Arts and culture are a powerful magnet to attract tourism and other significant industries. California is number one in the nation regarding creative economy, 50% of that comes out of LA, a third, the Bay Area. Sacramento deserves to be a major contributor. Doing so not only brings major jobs here, but also adds value to our city's profile from increased global visibility, which is why investing in both arts, education, and our creative professionals is smart business. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Tricia Romberg, then Tamara Sandifer, then Paul Willis.
Hello, and thank you for allowing me to speak today. My name is Tricia Romberg, and I come to you today wearing... My name is Tricia Romberg, and I come to you today wearing three hats. First, as a business owner, I've owned retail businesses in Sacramento since 2007. The Public Market Gallery at Wall, Makers Mart, SAC Made, Old Gold, these are the outlets in which I sell locally-made fine art and products to not only put food on my family's table, but to generate income for hundreds of other local creatives. My businesses are local. My businesses are Sacramento. They thrive when artists thrive, and Sacramento does not thrive without arts. My second hat is as an artist. I want to express how difficult it has been to see myself and my peers struggling while we're being used on every piece of marketing collateral to promote Sacramento. There should be no economic development plan that does not include the arts. No arts, then no culture, no city. Finally, I come to you as a parent for my child, for our children. It's crushing to think our city would consider denying her an opportunity to express herself through arts if there are no programs or outlets made available through the city's school system. City Council has the opportunity to fulfill the promises that were made to us. It's in all your hands today. Please do right by our artists, our children, and the city. Please ensure that the Creative Edge Plan forged in partnership between our city and our creatives is fully funded. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Tamara Sandifer. Tamara Sandifer, then Paul Willis, then Buddy Hale.
Dean, council, I just wanted to share something with you that happened to us last week. About 7:45 in the morning on Wednesday, Kiki went missing from her home in Seve Circle. She went off the radar. Nobody knew where she was or that she'd even disappeared until 7 o'clock at night when she missed dance. Kiki never misses dance. Called her parents, they had no clue, her grandma, where she was, the school, the dance community, we all assembled and we used social media to recover her. It took us 28 hours, but we got her back. She wasn't physically harmed, but she was emotionally harmed. She hasn't made it back to school yet, but she made it back to dance, where she's receiving her emotional healing. In 2012, Studio T was a regular brick-and-mortar dance studio, but we started noticing some difficult trends. We were losing our babies to drug addiction, homicide, even suicide. So we closed our doors and we set up arts programs right in the communities where these kids were being lost. As a result, we meet Kikis, thousands of them. In 2018, we served 5,122 kids and their parents. As a result, we are using the arts to keep kids off the streets, off of drugs, and we're building creative careers that are actually earning a higher living than their parents. As a result of our wraparound services through the arts, our parents are learning financial management, how to budget, how to get out of debt, how to get off public support, and how to support their families. I know you have a difficult decision to make by way of where to put your resources, but establishing arts programs in communities that are severely under-resourced with kids that are severely neglected, giving them access to opportunity, creativity, that develops leadership and growth, means stimulation in your economy. It means a better community, it means a better body of constituents, and it means a successful group of genera, of kids, a different generation that's using creativity and social media to earn a living and change the world. Thank you.
Paul Willis, then Buddy Hale.
What's a city without its art and its soul? It's a false choice to think that you have to choose city and human services over the arts. The arts are human services by their very nature. The current tools that exist don't fully capture the depth and the level of impact that the arts have in our communities to change lives and save others. The current tools that exist, they struggle to demonstrate the diversity and complex perspectives of our region. Artists and community leaders have brought a multitude of innovations and solutions forward through the Creative Edge Plan. And as politicians, I'm sure that you can appreciate that it's really hard to get people to agree on anything, but we, as the artist community, we agree on this. So I implore you to imagine a city where its creatives are partners at every level. We bring tremendous value, not just through curating the human experience through social capital, but as well as dollars and cents. I've seen that growth personally as a, through So Far Sounds Sacramento. We are a recipient of the Creative Edge Economy Grant. I've seen that growth through So Collective and as a hip-hop artist and a spoken-word poet myself. So we, as the artist community, we're just hoping that you recognize that value and continue to grow your support. Thank you.
The next speaker is Buddy Hale, then Alexandra Cunningham.
Hello, council. My name is Buddy Hale, and I'm the founder of the Library of Musicalandria. We're a creative hub here in Sacramento that offers free instrument lending, free instrument lending, recording services, practice space, educational workshops, and events. We support the arts by encouraging exploration and professional growth. When I was eight months old, my mom left me on my father's doorstep. My dad was 66 when he had me and battled with dementia while trying to raise three kids. Growing up and trying to navigate the world around me was extremely difficult, and my life was on a downward spiral. When I was 12, my probation officer enrolled me in drum lessons, and it drastically changed my life. Music allowed me to explore my own identity, process my traumas, and engage with a positive outlet. I built a family that I never had through the music community. Flash forward to 2012, and I get accepted to SAC State's business program to help me start a nonprofit. Since our launch, we've helped countless artists create new music, develop new skills, and perform live. We've supplied organizations like Peach House Presents with the equipment needed to host an annual music festival here in Sacramento. We provide educators with free access to instruments for their classrooms, and just recently, we helped a local business record sound for a California statewide rebranding campaign. We even provided the city of Sacramento with instrument props for the promotional video that was made last year about how to make Sacramento a destination city. We all know how the arts build a creative economy. The council has done an excellent job identifying the importance of the arts in Sacramento's future, and I fully support the work that's been done with the Creative Edge Plan and the Creative Economy Grants. In closing, I would like to urge council to approve the $2.2 million in the 2019 and 2020 budget for the arts and to recognize arts as a part of our city's core services. By doing so, our city will continue to thrive, grow, and develop into the destination city we've all been working so hard to create.
Thank you.
Alexandria Cunningham, then Martin Anaya.
My name is Alexandra Cunningham. I've been a dancer with the Sacramento Ballet for 14 years, and I'm also a founder and leader of the Capital Dance Project. And I'm really pleased to tell you about the work we've been doing with Capital Dance Project and how it affects our creative economy very directly. Capital Dance Project was started in 2015 to provide employment opportunities for dancers during our off-season summer months. Very much like an athlete, professional artists also have an off-season, but we wanted to stay engaged in our community. Artists have come from all over the world to join the Sacramento Ballet Company because it's a world-class organization, and it's a very beautiful professional organization. However, in the summertime, these artists often have to leave to find other employment opportunities. Capital Dance Project helps keep these dancers here. We create all our own performances, not only dancing and choreographing in the shows, producing all aspects of our productions. We give back to our community through extensive outreach programming. We've created a sensory-friendly dance program that helps give unprecedented access to individuals with autism or other disabilities, the ability to experience dance, the beautiful movement, the freeing feeling that you get from that. As artists, we're not just entertainers in this city. We're very important, vital parts of our creative economy. We've invested ourselves to be here and live here and stay here, and we hope that you will as well. To date, Capital Dance Project has produced 40 world premiere dance works that reflect our thriving community, arts community. I've had the chance to work directly with some of the artists that are even here in this room. We've also provided our performances for over 4,000 audience members. We've provided employment opportunities for over 50 Sacramento artists over our five years. And we also give back to our community through free and discounted ticket programs to make it accessible for everyone to attend the arts, not just those that can afford it. So with that, I hope that you consider an economic plan that helps invest in the artists.
Your comments, your two minutes is complete.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alexandra. Thank you so much.
Martin Anaya, then Kaylee Casey. Martin, and then Kaylee.
Martin?
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council. I wanted to say a few words. My name is Martin Anaya with the California Film Foundation. Very excited to invite you on June 1st to the celebration of the just-confirmed 24th Annual Sacramento International Film Festival. And, and to point out that that's going to be at Carol's Books on Del Paso Boulevard, 1913 Del Paso Boulevard. Couple things quickly. One, in all of the years of, of this wonderful film festival, we've applied for and taken exactly one SMAC grant. So I'm not necessarily here to advocate on behalf of my organization today, but I am here to advocate on behalf of a number scores of professionals and of artisans who've made this their living that we've had the good fortune to be able to touch and support the maturation and the growth. I could be here all day talking to you about wonderful stories, some of which you've already heard today, of artists who've, who've, who've done these things and have become a contributor to the, to the local economy and to the statewide economy. Want to encourage you, please, please do that $2.2 million, please do consider that, because that is, in my opinion, just a baseline. And I also want to very much thank you for the inclusion. We run the Sacramento International Film Festival. We also run the Sacramento Black Film Festival, the Sacramento Asian Film Festival, and Sine Latino, the Sacramento Latino Film Festival. And I'm telling you that this inclusion and the diversity, the diversity among folks is going to be, is going to pay off in, in scores. So again, thank you very much. This has already paid off, but we're looking to a bright future, and we do appreciate it. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Kaylee Casey. Following Kaylee is Isella Perez.
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council. My name is Kaylee Casey. I'm a senior from John F. Kennedy High School, and I'm here to ask for the $2.2 million for arts and music programs. Personally, I've been in band since third grade, and I plan to continue in music for the rest of my life. This upcoming summer, I will be traveling across the country, participating in drum and bugle corps, and in the fall, I will be playing in the Cowell Band at UC Berkeley, where I plan on double-majoring in performance for French horn and bioengineering. I ask for funding for arts and music programs. Thank you. I ask for funding in arts and music programs because without it, students after me will not have the same opportunities. For those who don't know, your arts and music programs and your, the next generations are in jeopardy because the Sacramento City Unified School District has been working on cutting arts and music funding for decades, and in the next two years, they plan on completely cutting out our music library as well as middle-school bands. And for many students, myself included, band has become a home and a second family to support me through all of my struggles through high school. We see music as a motivation to continue to go to school, and we can find love and happiness in a group that accepts all. Band has defined who I am and has made me the confident and determined person that you see up here today, and this is the case for many young and troubled students. I know many of my friends or fellow sectionmates or people across the band who will not have continued coming to school or would have given up on life if they hadn't had the community that they had at band. And this isn't just the case in my school district. This is the case that there is any music program, any band, any choir, orchestra, including, you know, even art classes itself, which are also being cut by our school district at the time. So please consider this, and thank you for your time.
Thank you for coming today. Thank you.
The next speaker is Isella Perez, then Courtney Joy Sanders.
Good afternoon. My name is Isella Perez. I'm a Sacramento native, a SAC State graduate, a former Sacramento Kings dancer, and the owner of SAC Dance Lab. SAC Dance Lab is the city's premier commercial dance studio, offering training to adults since 2017. We consider ourselves a support system for dancers to pursue their careers by offering professional development, including affordable, quality dance classes, paid performance opportunities, and work-study for our students. So far, we've trained over 25 dancers who've been cast for national tours, the NFL, the NBA, and have shared the stage with Grammy-nominated artists. Our goal is to provide enough of these opportunities that dancers can make a comfortable living wage and call Sacramento home. The Creative Edge Plan is a great start. It details numerous viable ideas that, if made into reality, could increase traction for all creatives. Our community alone would benefit from formalizing busking, developing an innovation fund for profit-based creative businesses like ours, and revamping the Any Given Child Program to give more students access to working creative industry professionals while providing much-needed additional income for artists in the gig economy. So much talent comes from Sacramento. If the arts are supported through proper funding, the creative industry can be catalyzed by exposing underserved but potentially talented people to discover their artistic discipline that could possibly become their life's work. It only benefits us to give equal access to as many people as possible. This community in front of you today is ready to do the work it takes to creatively boost our local economy. Meet us in the middle and fund the arts at the $2.2 million alternative budget. Thank you.
Thank you, Isella.
I have six more speakers. Courtney Joy Sanders, then Buck Busfield.
Good afternoon. I am Courtney, and I go to John F. Kennedy. I am a freshman, and I am in the band program. The band program has helped me throughout all the years I've been going to band. I've been in band since sixth grade, and I've recently heard that you guys are trying to cut that. I encourage you not to, because it has helped me through a lot of stuff. Band is the number-one thing that keeps me going. It, it's just, band is everything. I get up every morning at 4:00 AM just to go to Kennedy so I can be a part of their band program. I honestly can say that the band program has helped me with my confidence. It's helped me with my social skills, because I'm not very social. Band has helped me with all of that. And whenever I'm sad or having a bad day and I go to band, it's, it's helped me, like, helped me with my mood, my, it's just helped me so much. And I encourage you guys not to cut it, because band has been the number-one impact of my life, and band has made me the person I am today. So please consider not cutting it, and please help us with our budgeting. Thank you so much for your time.
Mayor, may I really quick? Next speaker is Buck. I'm sorry, Minnie.
Councilmember.
Young lady, I'm sorry, I didn't catch your name. Courtney. You did a great job advocating, but I want to make sure that before you leave this room, you understand one thing, and that is you need to repeat that speech, but you need to report it to the SAC City Unified School District School Board, because they are the ones who are considering the cuts of the various schools. We don't have control over that, and your statement today was very powerful. You said you're not social, but I don't believe you, because you are an outstanding speaker. I'm afraid you will have to give that speech again, all right? And this time to SAC City Unified School District to make sure your voice is heard. Yeah? Okay. Next speaker is Buck Busfield, then Alice Soro.
Good afternoon, Mayor, City Council. I'm Buck Busfield, artistic director of the B Street Theater in Midtown Sacramento. Every time we in the arts community stand before you, we cite the importance of the arts and impact, and it's usually studies and reports prepared by consultants, taking a lot of national data. I have, I'm in the fairly unique position to give personal testimony about the impact of the arts on the community when you use city funds wisely. And about 30 years ago, we received a grant from the Sacramento Metropolitan Arts Commission for $2,500. We had a staff of six people. Our budget was under $100,000, and we reached under 100,000 kids in the region schools. And this coming year, we're projected to have a budget of $4 million, over 50 employees, and we're going to serve almost 300,000 people in the region. And it's not just folks that look like you and me, it's kids, it's folks of all ages representing every community out there. Additionally, when this- Additionally, when this august body saw its way to support the new Sofia Sacopla Center for the Arts, it exploded the programming. And we're not just doing theater, we're doing dance. Many of the folks that are here today have used this beautiful new facility. We use dance, we presented dance, of course, a lot of theater, podcasts, stand-up comedy, you name it. We've had dozens of meetings for civic and community groups. When you give to the arts, it doesn't only help us, it helps many, many others. I have three restaurateurs every day texting me saying, "Is there a show tonight? Is there a show tonight? Is there a show tonight?" Because they want to know how many people and how many seats to add. So please remember this, folks, as you consider this $2.2 million, that funding for the arts is economic development. Thank you.
Alice Sorrow, then Tamika LaCuse.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and Council. My name is Alice Sorrow. I'm Executive Director with the Sacramento Philharmonic and Opera. This is Julian Dixon. He's our Senior Director for Community Engagement and Outreach Programs. I want to thank you for all the city has done for the arts and for our organization. As many of you know, we were not doing well about four or five years ago, and one of the first things we came back was bringing music to 5,000 students in the Community Center Theater. And we've continued that program all these years, and Julian is developing it whereby next year, we hope to reach 6,500 children when we are at the memorial auditorium. The second thing that we did was we came back and we hit the ground running at the farmers' markets and all the community areas in everybody's district so that we could be a grassroots-type of organization, meeting people where they live, families in every neighborhood in this community. We want to thank you for helping us do that, and we want to thank all of these people here. These were some great stories today, hearing from students and startup groups, and it just shows you how important the arts are to this community, from the kids all the way up to the grandparents. And let's keep Sacramento going. With that in mind, the programs that Julian is working on with Carnegie Hall, which is our education program, Link Up, addressing the dearth of music teachers in the schools, is really a workforce development program, and that's a lot of what we're talking about today. Help kids learn, help them develop their minds so they can be greater community citizens for the future of this community and Sacramento as a whole. And I think all of us in the arts community want that for everybody. Thank you. We want you to help us help you, and we hope that you will continue to support and keep the $2.2 million in the budget. Thank you.
The next speaker is Tamika LaCuse, Rachel Freund, and then Amy Tokuhama.
Hi, Mayor and Council. Thank you for your time today. My name is Tamika LaCuse, and I am here to represent the Sacramento Women's and Girls Advancement Coalition, also known as SWAC. We ask that you ensure a full-time childcare coordinator position be included in your economic development plan as part of your support for the department's budget and staffing request. But as the city moves forward to expand its economic development strategy, having a designated person work to build the supply of childcare should be on the part of the foundational approach. And we've heard foundations so many times tonight that I really hope that you consider that when you're making these decisions. So just to give you a sense of the importance, in 19, I'm sorry, in zip code 95817, my old zip code in Oak Park, 120 married couples with kids lived in poverty in 2016, but 236 female-headed households with kids lived in poverty. That underscores the need for childcare to help parents keep and get jobs. A childcare coordinator would convene a panel of childcare and early learning stakeholders. They would help develop a strategic plan, and they would follow up as directed by Howard Chandler, City Manager, and you, the Council. The goal would be to better serve families struggling to make ends meet, who are living with the stress of unpredictable, low-quality, expensive childcare. And as you know from your own experiences, from whether it's community discussions or just from talking to your constituents, parent groups, or maybe you're a parent yourself with someone in childcare, you know that in 2019, our families just aren't the same as the 1950s. Two paycheck, single-parent households, that's what we have here in Sacramento.
Your comments.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tamika. Thank you.
Next speaker is Rachel Freund, and then Amy Tokuhama. Rachel here.
Thank you very much. My name is Rachel Freund, and I'm here to speak up for allocating at least $2.2 million in our city's budget to fully fund the arts in Sacramento. I work full-time for the State Department of Fish and Wildlife, and together with Buddy Hale, who spoke earlier, I volunteer to help run the Library of Musicalandria, which is a nonprofit, free musical instrument lending library. We ensure that individuals and families in Sacramento who have limited incomes still have full access to the tools that they need for musical expression, which is a fundamental part of their lives. And this requires significant personal investment in terms of money, time, passion, and I know that I'm not alone, thankfully. The city is full of people like me who are dedicated to supporting the arts, for now. But I feel as if our city is at a precarious position. People can't afford to make a living with their art. They're just struggling to make ends meet, and by the end of the day, don't have the bandwidth or the resources to create art. So I feel we need to take steps as a city, we need to take radical steps to incentivize creativity in Sacramento. And I think that the Creative Edge Plan is a good map for the future, but I feel we need to step up and allocate $2.2 million in this budget for full arts funding. And furthermore, equity is our goal, so we need to make sure that this money is going directly to the local artists.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And our final speaker is Amy Tokuhama.
Mayor and City Council members, my name is Amy Tokuhama. I am Chair of the Natomas Garden and Arts Club. I have lived in Sacramento most of my life, and I've lived in the Natomas area for over 20 years. For the last seven years, I have owned the café at the South Natomas Community Center. I do support the $2.2 million for the budget. I'm actually here to ask for support in our efforts to convert the recently vacated Fire Station 15 on Truxell Road into a garden and arts center for our community. We in Natomas can make it happen, we just need the keys to the building. Planning, growing, and caring for a garden takes hard work and dedication. Turning an artistic vision or concept into a finished work takes the same kind of sticktuitiveness and perseverance. Such practices teach life skills of deferred gratification and patience. These skills can be honed at any age and can profit a person at any age. A garden and arts center could help strengthen the community bonds and help establish Natomas in the arts economy as a destination for visitors, as well as a beautiful place to live. You may not know, but Natomas has many dedicated gardeners. Our neighborhood is full of imaginative landscaping and urban food production. We would like to use the undeveloped lots that surround the firehouse to demonstrate water-efficient indigenous landscaping, support edible gardening, and attract pollinators such as bees and butterflies. And we also need a dedicated gallery space to show the artwork of our many artists that live in the Natomas community. Our center would be a place to learn, teach, practice, and strengthen our community bonds. I know this belonged in the CIP, but I appreciate you listening to me, and I do support the $2.2 million. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk, and thank you to the members of the public. Let's turn it back to the City Council for comments or questions. Council Vice Mayor Geta.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This item that we have here is just a portion of our city budget, and we're here to give direction, I guess, to our city manager and have a conversation about how we'd like to see this budget that we're constructing. And again, clearly, our discussion today is about the future of our city. And what kind of budget do we want to approve today, given the opportunities we've been given for the development of the future of our city? Not the city for tomorrow, not the city of July 1st when we pass the budget, but for the long term of our city. And if there's anything I've learned as being a farmworker, is that investments today yield fruits in the future. And hard work early on in tilling the soil gives higher yields in the future. And I think that that's a conversation that we are, that I want to put in the forefront. I want to first thank our city staff, I want to thank our city manager, but especially our team all in the Economic Development Department, who have sat with me for many, many hours and taken the time to go visit areas like the Powering Corridor, Stockton Boulevard, and Folsom Boulevard, and looked at the challenges that we have in actually trying to get to that place. They have been mighty in their small team that they've been able to put together and accomplish many big things for the city, and our city has been successful because of it. We've seen those successes in our central city, in our core, and it's time that we get those successes everywhere else in the city. So it's only appropriate that through a number of stakeholder meetings throughout the city, throughout the mayor's office and reaching out in the Project Prosper conversations, to talk about metrics, talk about goals, to look at the Brookings Institute that was put together not only by our city but the regional players, to look at where we are from an equity standpoint of our city and understanding that even our small successes aren't very that significant in the bigger scale. And then the successes that have occurred haven't occurred equally inequitably across our city. So one, I want to say, send my strong support for the strengthening of our institutional team on economic development. We need to be better internally about the growth of our city and how do we provide tools for those in our city. We need to have our experts here so that folks from Creative Edge, folks from the childcare community, folks from areas on Stockton Boulevard Development Community, in that area that are trying to run a regular business, can come and ask for help. I think that the Neighborhood Action Plan that you guys are putting together, the development of these neighborhood outreach teams as well, so that we can make clear steps forward to make changes on Northgate, on Stockton Boulevard, Del Paso Boulevard. We can't do that without having our own internal house in order, and this, I think, part of this proposal moves us forward. I want to thank all the artists that came out here today, you know, particularly some of my favorite folks from the Alma Mater of Sac State Gold Hornets and Stingers, up to those out there. Isella Perez, who runs a business, runs the Sacramento Dance Studio and pays a lease on a vacant, in a vacant building, the atrium, that's now become a center for the arts, and providing economic activity on an area of Folsom Boulevard that also has seen better days. Those kind of art businesses, like Blue Rose Dance Project also, have filled up vacant locations on the old Tallick Village Shopping Center that has seen also better days, but now is providing energy and whatnot and activity for that community. I want to make sure that we continue to inspire those types of creative businesses, because even though, as an electrical engineer by training, I also had an opportunity to enjoy being part of a band and showing, and understanding that it's that creative activity that moves us forward. So, Mr. Mayor, I do support this Creative Edge proposal that the folks here are proposing to get today, of this $2.2 million, to be part of this economic development piece on the guise of looking at it from the scope of economic development. The second, I also want to be clear, is I also support having an additional FTE, specifically in economic development, to look and address the issue of childcare. And I do respect our Assistant City Manager and their staff for the thoughtful consideration about workload and will this accomplish much. But if there's anything clear that my office has learned, and we will have a deeper hearing on the Law and Legislation Committee on June 4th, is that there's a lot of work to go around when it comes to the issue and the challenges that our workforce, our families, and our city is facing on the issue of childcare. And that's not just on the permitting side, on the space side, on the running of a business, but also on the development of the people who want to work in this area. So I think having a commitment to a staff member in that is an important piece. I know we've got to balance all those issues with all of the development that we have to do, but from a workforce standpoint, I think there's a lot of yield, because in a two-income household, as you heard one of the speakers say here, Ms. LaCuse, we have to be able to make people, give people the opportunity to get to work when they want to work to support their family. Finally, I think we have to think about the future of our city again from a standpoint of health, from a standpoint of better planning. If we look at the goals of SB 375, infill is not cheap, infill is not easy, but we have to be able to have the tools to do that. Also, looking at areas of how do we corner the market on zero-emission technology? We are the home of Siemens, we are the home of Mitsubishi Rayon, we are the home of a lot of technical innovative companies, the ATOS work that's happening now. We should corner that market and be the home for zero-emission technology, and I think investing and making sure that we work with SMUD, Sac State, UC Davis, on the California Mobility Center is going to both achieve not only economic goals but air quality improvement goals and the goals of what it is to live in a city that is focused on both the health and environment of everyone. With this, I think it's a great move moving forward, Mr. Mayor. I think the only changes I would make in here is the support of the arts and definitely the support for our working families through the strengthening of our Economic Development Department with childcare. So with that, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and let's move this budget forward.
Thank you. Councilmember Jennings.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll be brief, because I'm concerned about, we have another agenda item for this meeting.
We do.
And it's getting close to 4 o'clock, and I know we have closed session also at 4 o'clock.
We're going to see what time we finish this and.
So I know you'll work the magic and make all of that work out. Then we have another council meeting at 5, which I want to make sure all of you know that you're invited to attend as well. And whoever gave the treats, thank you very much. They will help tremendously between this meeting and next meeting. Mayor, I just want to give my support to the arts program as well. Councilmember Gera talked about playing an instrument growing up. I too played an instrument. I was probably the only person that actually played a saxophone in a football uniform. Had to be on the field for the second quarter and the third quarter, but I had to play at halftime, so I played. So I think if you look at all of us as a council, you'll find that we probably have a band up here somewhere that we could be playing. But we all participated in the arts, and we realize how important the arts are for us. And so I think I heard Mr. Busfield say that funding the arts is economic development, and I totally agree with that wholeheartedly, not just him, but many of you said the same thing. So I am in support of trying to figure out how do we get the $2.2 million to fully support the arts program, the Creative Edge Arts Program that we're talking about today, and I just want to throw my support behind that. If there's a way that we can make that happen, I'm in full favor of that. I believe in the potential that it has. And for our kid, for the young people who came up and spoke, it does take a lot to come to the microphone and speak, but you did it elegantly, and you did it very well. And so I want to continue to encourage our young people to come to the microphone and advocate what's important to them. That means a lot to us. And we were all young once, right? So that prepared us for this opportunity.
Long time ago, yeah.
I also want to give my support to the full-time child development director, Councilmember Gera. I know this was something that was very important to you. You've been talking a lot about it. We've heard other colleagues talk about it as well. And I believe that if it's not right now, I at least want to know a timeline that we are talking about getting there. I know with the homeless program, we didn't go immediately into it, but I think when people talk about this type of a program, especially childcare, they're looking to make sure that it's fully staffed and that there's not going to be any issues as far as our kids having proper oversight. So I want to give my support to that as well. And then the call-to-action slide that kind of raised so much concern, and I think what I heard my colleagues saying, and I just want to kind of add my point to this, is when you see. is when you see a slide like that and it starts talking about a call to action, what I'm looking for is a strategic action plan that addresses that call of action, short term and long term. So I think that's where the whole conversation starts, talking about the metrics and all those kinds of things. I know this is a long-term investment, but I'm also trying to see how much incrementally are we going to try to bite off every year in order to see progress? And so I look forward to the detailed economic development plan that you will come to the office and present to us, because maybe the answers are there. But when you see that call to action slide, it says to us, especially when you read the detail, something has to be done immediately to address those. And so while there is a long-term solution, I also want to make sure we have some short-term wins as well. And so I think I'm going to stop there in order to let my colleagues, I see all, everyone is, is on the boards, I'll let them continue on with that, but I'm in support of the following items that I just mentioned. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Councilman Carr.
Of course, I'm in support of the arts as well. I'd like to thank Julian for bringing the Symphony Orchestra out to District 8 and singing with the Meterview Phoenix Park Choir, I guess it was. And Buck, for all that you've done for this community, and Ms. T. as well, for bringing arts to Sacramento. It's one of the things that people asked me to do when I was first elected, to bring more art out to the districts, and you've helped us do that. With the possible exception of Rob Fong, I don't think what I'm going to say next is going to be greatly accepted. I think we spend far too much energy and time on budgets and no reverence to what those budgets are supposed to produce. And to sit here and look at a bunch of activities, I'm specifically talking about the economic development part, a bunch of activities, and being asked to answer the question, is this sufficient? Well, sufficient to do what? And when I asked Michael that, it was probably the wrong person to ask, because I feel it's up to the council to determine what those outcomes are. And I don't think we've done our job. We haven't set the goal as to what we are trying to accomplish. Yet you are going ahead and developing a plan, you must do it. You must have, put together a budget, so you got to have a plan. But we, as a council, have not said what we are trying to do. Are we trying to diversify our economy? If yes, to what extent? Then I will know if this is sufficient. Are we trying to reduce poverty? How much? Then I will be able to tell that this is sufficient. Are we trying to increase housing? By how many? Are we trying to grow jobs? What types? Once we, as a council, establish that, then the staff, Mr. City Manager, you will be able to put together a strategy for producing that, but we haven't done it. Our ad hoc hasn't met in almost six months now to continue to define what those outcomes are supposed to be. So look at it from my perspective. You're sitting here, and people are showing you a bunch of activities and saying, we're going to do these activities with this much money, without establishing what those activities are supposed to produce. And it's the same thing for every briefing that we're going to receive. When the fire chief comes up, he's going to say how many battalion chiefs he needs, but we won't have established what we are trying to produce. Are we trying to produce for fire, for instance, to have the lowest fire insurance rates for our citizens in the city? Is that what this budget will produce? And you can do it for every single thing that we are looking at, for parks and rec from police, every single thing. So I think we have to get on the ball. In the absence of a council taking definitive actions and establishing what those outcomes are, the staff has no alternative but to produce a budget and to fill in that void that we, as a council, are not filling in. So I'm not going to repeat this for every single budget item, but it's frustrating to me to sit here, to look at budgets without having established what that budget is supposed to produce. And it's frustrating to me that, as a council, we haven't devoted the necessary time and energy into putting our minds on these value issues that should be ours to decide, as opposed to the staffs to decide. So I'm not going to repeat that. That's my story, and I'm sticking to it, and Rob Fong appreciates it.
Thank you so much. Councilmember Hanson.
Thank you, Mayor. I might pick up a little bit on what Mr. Carr was saying, but first, I've talked repeatedly about the arts budget our last meeting, and I'll repeat it again here. I can't see voting for a budget that doesn't fully fund the arts in the way that's been talked about, and there's just no path for me to do that. But I also think, at the last meeting, I asked for us to try to reconcile what was proposed in the budget that was circulating by the arts community and what has come forward out of CCS. And I haven't seen any staff work along those lines, and I get that each one of these presentations is meant to sort of reflect the manager's proposal, but I think it underscores something that I hear Mr. Carr sort of saying, is that we have a deficiency of ability to analyze here, and there's a variety of reasons for that. One is, there's all the positioning around money and jobs and everything, but I also think that we don't know how to cross-reference through the budget what's going where and what it means. So, for instance, I heard a lot of really exciting stuff out of economic development, Mr. City Manager, but to Larry's point, when I look at the performance measures on page 146 of the budget, which is the section that's your office and includes economic development, there's very little substantive information to judge. There's number of jobs tracked, number of businesses in the city, and employment rate, and that's about it. I think those are very broad. We could look those up, at least the employment rate, through a number of different sources. But I do think that these performance measures aren't being benchmarked back to how we invest. And I do think that would be healthy. How we do that is a different question. The council hasn't really gone through a goal-setting process for each department, and that might be laborious, but I think it's a worthwhile point. I think, though, for the debate that's going on, it's hard to know how to characterize items in your budget, Mr. City Manager, or even, honestly, I think arts are inclusive economic investment for the city. We don't know what all those items are. So we heard the city Assistant City Manager, Jasso, present on new teams of people to do various things. I think of that as inclusive economic development, focused on disadvantaged neighborhoods, focused on organizing investment in those neighborhoods. But we don't have a budget that sort of allows us to call that across the different silos. And I would just ask that, before we get to final budget adoption, that your staff work with me or whoever to help figure out what that number is. Because a lot of people look at this budget, and it's a big book, I'm not going to lie. I've been up here for seven years, and I still learn things about this budget and the process, because it's iterative, but it's really hard for the public to understand all the different things that are being proposed, especially because if you look at a certain department, you may not see other things in other departments. And I think we have to reframe how we tell the story of the budget, but we definitely have to increase the amount in the arts budget. And so I would just ask that, hearing all my colleagues, that we focus on direct grants to artists and arts organizations as the priority for rebuilding that to, whether it's 2.2, maybe it comes in a little bit higher, because there's some priorities the staff have that may not be reflected in the community budget, and I think we've got to work through that, but this is not an easy process to sort of haggle over a certain number. The other thing, too, is, you know, for all the new positions that are moving into economic development, I don't know why, and this, I'm asking this respectfully, we can't have one childcare coordinator in a city of 5,300 and some employees, 5,400 and some employees. One childcare coordinator, seems like we could cough that up in this budget process, and I think that would mean a lot to the community who's trying to figure out, as childcare centers close for a variety of reasons, as it's very expensive, what our approach is to supporting those families. And I applaud Mr. Gera and the folks who are leading that effort. Other than that, the only other thing I'll say is, I had a nice conversation with your staff about economic gardening. I think I finally understand what that means, but I also understand it means contracting with a foundation in Michigan to run a program for us, and I would just say, like, maybe we could do that here at home, invest back into the community and achieve that goal, but I'll, I'll leave it to you and your team to figure that out.
Thank you. Councilman Harris.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate Councilmember Hanson's comments, and also Councilmember Carr. I think one area where we're really deficient in the city is in performance metrics. We don't, I feel, really keep track of where our investments lead us and what the return on those investments actually are, and that gets to Councilmember Carr's point of, what are you trying to achieve in the first place? So performance metrics is a big piece of that. I know that we have Dan Sanchez working on performance metrics, but I haven't seen any of his work, and I'm actually not sure exactly how to make better use of that, but I'm sure that there's a way forward. You know, we all know that playing musical instruments, and there's a lot of data on this, leads to better scores in math, and it is a real travesty that SCUSD is on the brink of receivership, and what happens when a school district goes broke is the first thing that happens, is that arts and music are cut. I didn't know previously that playing the French horn leads you to bioengineering. I learned to play the violin, apparently it leads to politics. So I definitely support more investment in the arts. I think the return on investment is very substantial overall, and I agree with Councilmember Hanson that there needs to be a larger discussion about what that number is and what we're trying to achieve with it. But I know from data and just intuitively that investment of the arts does bring tremendous community benefits, but it also brings a lot of monetary benefits to the, to the community as a whole. The way to pay for that, you know, is to adopt this budget, and we've got $51 million to work with, and certainly we could find at least a couple of million dollars for the arts in there, in my opinion. When you look at the things that we invest in as a city, sometimes we do one-off decisions, like the core program that we put $2 million towards. Well, I think the return on investment, investment of the arts will probably bring a lot more and serve the same communities. Again, I think that we need to track what we invest in and how we bring back that return on investment, and I'll leave my comments there.
Thank you. Councilmember Shenier.
Thanks, Mayor. Just a couple of questions, and Michael, if you can. So I want to absolutely be supportive of what Mr. Gera is talking about, and the childcare piece, I think it's incredibly important for, particularly for our families, so that they can do all the things that we want them to be able to do and be able to afford childcare on that. For me, there's a little bit of a gap between what we're talking about now at childcare and then kind of the workforce development issues that we're going to have to get to where we need to go overall. So I don't know, within the work that you're doing, kind of where you're thinking about kids who are beyond childcare but are not adults yet. So how are we going to work with our K-12 systems, or how are we going to do workforce development? And I don't know that you have answers right now, but even as we do these neighborhood strategic plans, I would like them to include the young people in those neighborhoods. So it should be really, should be comprehensive as we think about those items, and I don't know how much thought you guys, at this point, and I know it's very nascent in what you're doing.
So, so multiple topics, but they're obviously kind of overlapping and interrelated, kind of whether you're looking at childcare, whether you're looking at kind of skills-building, career pathways for young adults, particularly young adults that are not kind of either in school, pursuing kind of, kind of higher education or kind of in the workforce right now. So we do know, for instance, right now, we've not historically had someone focused on workforce development, either as a liaison and working with institutions such as SETA, community colleges, et cetera. Those are all vacuums and holes we have to fill. Right now, what we ask for were kind of a pool of resources that we can deploy people into, even though they will be falling into discrete areas as we move forward. But we can always use the resources. We know that, that these are important vacuums, that we can't begin to make a dent in kind of, kind of path, career pathways without focusing on it, kind of in a, in a really kind of holistic and concentrated manner.
So I'm making an assumption that after some of the conversation at the dais today, we will at some point be seeing a dashboard that we can be measuring what we're trying to get to as we go. So I just want to make sure that within that dashboard, we're not only considering childcare, but we're considering our young K-12 folks as well, so that we can measure where we're going with them, job-wise, internship. I mean, we, we know what works, and this is going to bleed over into some of the comments that I certainly have around the next budget that we'll be doing this afternoon, but I think how you work with YPC, how you work with the youth development work that we've put together in creating young people that can fulfill the jobs that hopefully we're going to be creating through all the good work that you're going to be doing. We need to grow our own here, and so I think the collaboration between your department and YPC is going to be really critical on that as well.
I would expect that.
Okay, thank you. And then I just have one question on, on the 2.2 million. So I don't know if that's Jody.
Yeah, that's right.
I'm assuming that comes from the plan, right? I haven't really been involved in the discussion, so I'm not sure of the origination of the 2.2.
I think the 2...
Creative, Creative Edge Plan.
Right, the 2.2 would be embedded in the Creative Edge Plan.
And I'm supportive of doing that, and I think Buck left, I had more questions about. I mean, the economic activity that's developed out of our investment in B Street has been really incredible. I think it's something, I think it's a case study that we should be talking about a lot more than we do. But, so I'm very much in favor. To me, it seems that the 2.2 is really a down payment on what we're going to be looking at over the next decade, or however you want to look at that. Do you know how much of the 2.2 is ongoing versus one time? And I was trying to kind of...
One time?
No.
No, the...
There are some staff positions in it.
Yeah, no, I know. I'm kind of re...
I think, well, I believe most...
Let me ask this question. As, as you answer the questions that Mr. Hanson has posed for you, and get, and we received that information, if you could, this is kind of hard to add up.
Right.
If you could break it down in just a pretty simple, or maybe this is a dawn question, I don't know, into a simple chart of ongoing dollars, one-time dollars, and then a little bit, for me, a little bit more explanation of what we're dipping our toe into here. And again, I think it's the right thing to do, but I think kind of in the full information that we want. We will be back here next year, because we'll be in implementation on some of the things that, that this holds, and I think as we talk about these out years and start to think about commitments that we're making, that's going to be a big one as a request, and so I think we need to know that going in as well.
Can I bring that back? And this, as the 2.2, I apologize, we were trying to break out the FTEs versus programs and grant awards, but it is but the first phase of the Creative Edge Plan, for all intents and purposes.
Right, so I think, I think part of the discussion is not just the 2.2. Again, the 2.2 is a down payment. I think it's the write-down payment, but having the data on that and what we're getting ourselves into is going to be important, as we have the discussion that I know we will be having before June 11th. Thank you.
Good. Thank you. Councilmember Ashby.
Thank you, Mayor. So my comments on today, of course, it's, it's always a little bit tough to do this exactly as Councilmember Carr laid out, because we're looking at one issue at a time, and we really should be looking at the whole budget at once, and so this is our way of doing that, working our way through each department. So my comments here, City Manager, are primarily for you, and just for you to take as, in concert with the rest of my colleagues, and then figure out where to go from there. Let's start with the childcare coordinator. I would agree with Councilmember Hanson. I do not believe we need an additional position, but you have offered an extraordinary number of new positions in economic development. I can't imagine that it would be hard to make one of them a dedicated childcare coordinator. I understand and appreciate the idea of starting with sort of a slow-pitched softball, but it doesn't quite feel right. So if there's a way for us to dedicate one of those existing positions to a childcare coordinator, I think that would be fantastic. I really like Councilmember Shenier's idea as well about a workforce development coordinator. Perhaps that would be a good job-share position, that a person could be in part doing workforce development with older youth, and in part doing the childcare, the dedicated childcare coordination. I like that idea. I think that adds quite a bit of value. We've added so many youth programs. Councilmember Shenier's done a great job, but all of us have added youth programs. but all of us have added youth programs. It would be fantastic. Mayor's added a lot of youth programs. It would be great to have a city employee who's doing youth workforce development. I just recently added that position to my youth advisory committee and sort of learning as we go, but it's incredibly useful to help these kids not only figure out how to get a job if they need that, but also to help them apply for scholarships or get letters from us for admission into college, and just a person who can coordinate that at the city level for all of us, I think, would be key, and I think it is well-matched in economic development. I want to thank you, City Manager, for adding the Film Commissioner. I know it was the number-one ask coming out of the creative economy meetings, and I think it's really important. I think it's a game-changer for Sacramento. As to the arts budget, I want to say a couple of things. One, I don't think 2.2 million should be hard to achieve. We're already at 1.3. That's not a huge stretch to get there. Maybe it's one-time this time, but if we proceed with the City Manager's budget, and I think there's some room in there to look at how we could add that, it's just under a million that we would need to add to reach the goal that the arts community is asking for, and I want to add my thanks to the arts community as well, because I think you have participated in this conversation, and the ask from the beginning to now has modified on your end too, and whichever one of you said, you know, we're in agreement and we're working together here, is accurate, because you have brought down your ask and said thank you to the council for things like the Film Commission, and then found a sweet spot in the middle that I, too, think is fair. So, I would love to see a budget that includes that slight addition for them. And then I just want to thank the City Manager and his team for the really robust inclusive economic development programs. I've, my beef over the last couple of weeks has been that there hasn't been enough coming out of the City Manager's office about these programs, because there's so much in here that I think is so great. The neighborhood development teams, I just, I just think that would be amazing to be able to have a dedicated economic development team in each of our targeted communities where we think there could be a need for help, an economic development expert, a planning person, a development person. That's fantastic. That is so useful. And then the financial empowerment centers, those are incredible, and to work with Stephanie Bray and United Way in their group, which I know the mayor has already initiated, the financial literacy program that they're doing embedded in financial empowerment centers is a perfect match for many of our neighborhoods. The entrepreneur program that includes the sustainability and incubator and gig economy is also fantastic work and something we hear a lot about. The SNAP, which is the Neighborhood Action Plans, and there were some people here that talked about the Northgate one. That's been established for a really long time, but components of these need to be funded, and they are in this budget, and I think that's fantastic and should not be missed. And then the last two items which were mentioned today, and I think are worthy of support, although they're probably slightly off the mark on when they asked for it, but the Natoma's Garden and Arts Project is just a fantastic concept that I love, and the Northgate improvements are also fantastic, but those two projects are also recommended for funding in the council priorities, one-time funds, and when we get to that part of this budget, I think those two things should be on there. I think they're fantastic, really important. Those communities have waited a long time to have that type of investment, and I think this is a great opportunity to do that. So, that's my input, City Manager, towards this process. Obviously, to weigh it against all the other departments that are still coming, but I think this was overall a really good hearing, and I agree with almost everything that my colleagues had to say. Thank you for the great budget.
Thank you. Councilmember Warren.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I am going to be brief, okay, because I know we need to get to another discussion, but I want to say I'm a believer in the arts. I believe arts bring people together, brings culture together. I believe art teaches people about our history, our past, and even our present, and so I'm a strong supporter of the art and a former musician, too. But the one thing that I have heard is that, you know, our art in Sacramento needs to be more inclusive, more inclusive of people of color, and so I will be an advocate for the arts, but an art that is a place of opportunity for all of our city, and so I'm hopeful that we will continue to work on that. And I understand we've done some work in that regard, but I think a lot more needs to happen. And I do also believe that in order for our city to truly be a great city, we need to have a robust art component in our city. If you look at other major cities throughout the world, most of them have some very substantial commitment to the arts and culture, and I think Sacramento is primed for it and will be very supportive. So, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much. Last word, if I may. I think it was a very good hearing, and I appreciate all the public testimony and the comments of the city council. I just want to go on record saying I strongly support the idea of a full-time childcare coordinator. I think that's very wise, and of course, I support the idea of $2.2 million for the arts. I want to thank my colleague, Eric. Thank you. And Hanson, on the art question, I know you've been working very hard on that. And I don't want to be the downer here, because there's so much good in this budget, including the SNAPs, the Neighborhood Strategic Action Plans, the foundation which we described earlier being laid by this budget to have the city take on this issue of economic development. But I know this, when there is little or no money, arts and childcare, to cite two examples, are usually the first things to go. And so, while we have real money to invest on a one-time basis, let's be clear about the Creative Edge Arts Agenda as one example. It calls for six to eight million dollars a year if we're going to be serious about increasing our cultural, our cultural index to really put us on the map and to really make this part of the creative economy. I'm concerned that we, I'll put it differently, we must make the commitment to sustain and grow these investments, which gets back to my beef and the thing that we go back to in terms of what we actually will be debating over the course of the next several weeks. We want to make a commitment to art. It's going to take much more than one-time funding of $2.2 million. It's going to take an increased investment, and it's going to have to be sustained. And as I look at the projection, if we aren't deliberate about setting aside resources in a real way, then we are saying to the arts community, for example, the women of Sacramento who are, who have made the compelling case about childcare, not just the women, but the women and the men, especially the women, we're saying to you, this year, okay. This year, you're fine, but all bets are off as we go forward. We don't do that with other parts of the city budget. But that's the central debate and argument, and again, as I said last week, I think it's a healthy and good argument for our city. I know there's a lot of seeming vitriol and this and that, and elbows and all that. I think this is good. This is healthy. This is what we should be doing as a city and as a democracy. But I'm going to keep pressing that point, because these are one-time investments, regardless of how many FTEs may be in the arts budget. When it comes to programming, it's one-time. I don't want it to be one-time, and I don't think any of you do either, and I know the community doesn't. I think what we're going to do now, we have a closed session, and we do have the youth presentation. I'm torn here. How long do, we don't want to give the short shrift, Jay, right? I don't think we want to do this in 10 minutes. Sure. I think what we do is we take a recess, we do our closed session, we come back at 5:00, we pick up with the youth budget, and then we'll go to the fire and police budgets. All right? We're in recess. Thank you. Okay, let's go. Good afternoon, everyone. This is actually not the beginning of the 5 o'clock meeting, but all of you who are here for the 5 o'clock meeting are welcome to stay, of course. We have to finish the 2 o'clock meeting of the city council's Budget and Audit Committee. And so, this is actually the full, we sit as a full. What's a, sorry. Never mind. A special meeting of the city council to address our budget issues, but we finished the afternoon meeting, and we have one more item on the afternoon agenda, and that is the fiscal year 2019-20 proposed budget for the Department of Youth, Parks, and Community Enrichment. Here we go.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Councilmembers. Shannon Brown, interim director for the Department of Youth, Parks, and Community Enrichment, also known as YIPSY. Today, I'm here to provide an overview of our proposed 1920 budget. In the winter of 2016, this city council challenged our city manager and the Department of Parks and Recreation to create a more youth-focused department to meet the needs of our community. Over the last two and a half years, our staff has collaborated with community leaders, stakeholders, youth development professionals to answer that call. Today, we have reorganized and repurposed Youth, Parks, and Community Enrichment Department, along with a fully-developed youth-centric strategic plan. We are now poised to execute the council's inspired vision with our opening set of programs and action plans as described in this budget. The Department of YIPSY underwent an organizational transformation with the primary intention of identifying strategies and investments that best develop and serve our city's youth. A key part of this transformation was the creation of the Youth Division dedicated specifically to youth development that works in concert with our community centers as hubs for youth programming and service delivery. The department's youth investment requests before you today is in alignment with the adopted plans for high-quality programming and development of youth and is critical for implementation of best practices. YIPSY is responsible for stewardship of $39 million and a workforce of more than 720 full-time equivalents. Of this, 13.9 million, approximately 188 FTEs, over one-third of our budget and one-quarter of our workforce are funded by Measure U. Thanks to our voters who supported Measure U, the department has realized many critical operational efficiencies and service-delivery enhancements to benefit our community. These resources have allowed the department to restore and support community center and heart senior center restoration of hours and programs. Youth Division offering a variety of programs in the area of workforce training and employment programs, such as SAC Youth Commission, Summer at City Hall, Landscaping and Learning, Primetime Teen Programs. All 12 of our swimming pools and four standalone wading pools will be open this summer, providing a safe and supervised environment for over 65,000 recreational swim participants. Our aquatics program alone employs 180 youth annually. Measure U has also increased park ranger safety services to protect and preserve our growing park system. Also, for park maintenance, it has restored weekly mowing, daily restroom cleaning, and litter pickup to high-use areas. As you recall, due to the economic downturn, community centers' hours were reduced. This resulted in a diminished capacity to support youth with programming as well as places to convene and celebrate. Our community centers serve as thriving hubs of activity and engagement for youth, families, older adults, and civic organizations. The accessibility and affordability of community centers' programming is especially crucial for communities that lack the necessary facilities to keep their children in safe and enriching environments. By providing safe spaces, our centers offer pathways for youth development and lifelong learning opportunities. The department proposes a 37% increase in centers' operation by increasing days and hours at six of our community center hubs. This will provide a total of an additional 5,000 hours of community use. Our community center hotspots offer a safe and supervised environment where youth can socialize and participate in a variety of activities, including basketball, breakdancing, DJ lessons, art classes, volleyball, indoor/outdoor soccer, and snacks. Our requests to expand hotspot locations would triple the number of hotspots held annually. It would take us from six hotspots a month to 17 a month. By increasing hours, we increase our ability to engage a broader base of youth and their families. For many young people, our low, no-barrier hotspot programs are the first point of entry to our programming. Our staff and partners use this opportunity as leverage for deeper and ongoing engagement across our continuum of youth development offerings, including our Primetime Teen Program, which provides interactive work readiness training for youth ages 13 to 17. Participants gain skill and resume development, completing job applications, interview preparation, financial literacy, communication, leadership, and community service. Our request will be able to serve an additional 120 youth annually, essentially doubling the amount of youth we'd be able to serve. Our after-school and youth programs request is to expand after-school sports to underserved areas in communities where these programs do not currently exist. This includes Twin Rivers, Robla, and Natoma's School Districts. Currently, youth programs in Sacramento have no common quality standards or efficiency measures. We need to develop a set of quality standards, measures, and continuous improvement processes, including assessment, evaluation, professional development for our youth-serving professionals. Critical to our success is hiring a program specialist. This position will support the youth program quality standards and continuous improvement efforts in accord with the citywide youth development plan and the YIPSY strategic plan. Without your support of our proposed budget, we will not be able to expand accessible and affordable workforce development and leadership programming like Primetime Teen, Inspire Me, Junior Recreation Aid Program, and our hotspots for youth that are critical to creating and supporting a future workforce that is inclusive and without systemic barriers to opportunities. Without the support of community center hours expansion, many of our centers are in the heart of underserved communities. Our free summer and out-of-school programs are critical for working families. We will not be able to expand our services and open hours without enough resources for safety and supervision. Recent events have shown us that youth need a safe and positive outlet for out-of-school time. We would not be able to offer spring and winter break camps and/or extend our days for valuable programming. In addition to high-quality programming and venues for civic engagement and celebration, our centers serve as invaluable facilities to respond to natural disasters and emergency support. Without sufficient resources, we cannot expand our capacity to meet emerging and unforeseen needs to help our most vulnerable populations in time of need. While many of our program participants and community center visitors expressed a desire to have their voices heard at this hearing, they were unable due to work and/or school. But to incorporate the citywide youth development plan's goals of youth participation through input and decision-making, we compiled this video for our youth to tell you what they want and what they need in their own words.
Hi, my name is Josephine Maud, 17 years old, and I have options for you. Because Primetime Teen are, you write your resume, they teach you job training skills to help you in the work world, and they do mock interviews to help prepare you for real interviews when you're attempting to get a job.
My name is Jalen Tolliver. I'm 15 years old. I go to the New York Academy, and the things I really like about Primetime Teen is that they're very motivating. They help you learn about mock interviews. They help you with getting jobs, and they help you speak out more to people that you aren't very comfortable speaking out to.
Hi, my name is Neira Fowler. I'm 14, and I go to Smith Middle School. Primetime Teens is a job readiness program. It helps teens get ready for the workforce. I like, what I like about Primetime Teens is I like, what I like about Primetime Teams is we get to do job applications and mock interviews, and we do team-building skills to help us work with a team better.
Hello, my name is Nicholas Lu. I am 18 years old, and I have been coming to George Sims since I was sixth grade. On Tuesdays, I would actually come over here and play Spike Night, which is actually an event where many volleyball players can come together and play against each other.
Hi, my name is Lilian Zhang, I am 16 years old. I feel really safe coming to this, coming to George Sims. I really love that you guys had the time to do that for volleyball people, like, I really appreciate it.
Hi, my name is Eric, I'm 24. When I was in high school, when I was a little bit younger, definitely getting up to no good, because, you know, there's no school on the weekends, so, you know, what are you gonna do? Get up to no good. But then instead, I came, you know, here, and it's been, you know, really good to have that outlet for it. Now that I'm a little bit older, it's nice to be able to be involved with my community. It's an area where, you know, the outside world doesn't really matter for that time that I'm here. You know, nothing else is going on regardless if it's home, or work, or school. When I'm here, I'm just here, and everything's good.
Hi, my name is Elvis, and I'm 15, and I go to Harren Johnson. George Sims has basically there for me because I helped volunteer for the summer program. It's been really, really fun, and I just had a lot of good time. There is this thing called hotspot that I heard about, and I got very curious about it, so I came to come check it out. Years later, I'm still here, just having fun and stuff.
I love this city. I like Sacramento a lot. I feel like, even though there's a lot of problems, I feel like it's still vibrant, it's still vibrant city. I really love it. I just feel like, there's, if there's one thing that's really powerful, it's youth voice and youth engagement. And once you are able to put a lot of youth into, like, the shoes of, like, leaders in the community, or people, like, just doing all they can to help the community, I feel like once you involve the youth in it, you make it, like, 10 times more powerful.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very much. We really wanted to make sure the youth's voice were heard. A lot of our advocates were here at the two o'clock session, but a lot of them had to, you know, pick their children up from childcare, so thank you very much for allowing us.
Apologize to them, we're sorry.
That's okay.
But thank you.
Thank you. Continuing, I would like to round off the presentation with talking about our objectives, I think which speaks really closely with what Councilmember Carr wants to make sure that we're tracking. So for the year ahead of us, to successfully implement the youth development plan, our in our YIPSI strategic plan, we have developed the following objectives to accomplish in the year 1920. We will continue to develop and implement the quality program standards and measures for all youth programs receiving city funding. We will continue to train city and community-based organization staff on program quality standards, assessment, and action planning to achieve continuous program improvement process. We will update the Park and Recreation Master Plan, including a recreation needs assessment that will go directly to the communities and neighborhoods so they can tell us what they would like to see in their parks in the future. Continuing to establish our policies and procedures for our departments so we have organizational excellence. And also, to be financially sound, we need to develop and complete a department-wide cost-recovery analysis on fees charged for services. With that, this concludes my presentation. I am available to answer any questions at this time.
Thank you. Councilmember Harris, do you want to wait? We have six members of the public. Okay. Let's hear from the members of the public, then we'll turn it to the council for questions and comments.
Thank you. My first speaker is Nanette West, then Greg Jefferson. And I don't see Nanette. I know some people had to leave. Greg Jefferson, is Greg here? Okay, following Greg is Tyler Aguilar.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council, and Councilman Warren, my councilman. I'm here on behalf of the YPCE program. I support the program in that in our neighborhood, Del Paso Heights, Twin Rivers School District, we have a number of disadvantaged youth that have been benefiting from city-sponsored programs in the summer in the past, and we would like to see a continuance of that support from the city. An example of what we've been doing lately would be that 10 weeks ago, we had an entrepreneur mayor, an entrepreneur team come to our neighborhood and said, hey, we want to train your young people in entrepreneurship. And so, for the last 10 weeks, they have, Councilman Warren's wife and my wife, Christine, her wellness program, my wife's mentorship program, youth from MLK School, combined together with other youth in the community to formulate a class of 40, 50 kids. And for the last 10 weeks, they've been coming up with a problem, identifying a solution, and then creating an app for that. In fact, today is the finale of their, of their 10 weeks of training in entrepreneurship. And now, and last Thursday, let me say this real quick, they were on the radio, 97.5 Live Broadcast. These kids who, 10 weeks ago, were timid, afraid to even walk up to a microphone, were doing a live, unscripted broadcast on the radio, selling themselves, selling their products, selling their ideas. So we're doing a Shark Tank finale today, 5:00 at the Robertson Center, where we, the adults, I might be Mark Cuban, where we sit back, let them do their final presentations, and then find out, and then pick a winner, and then there'll be prizes and whatnot. So a return on the investment, Mr. Carr, would be that we would be training kids with the resources that you provide to, if every kid's not going to college, if they don't go to college, at least they will have the skills to present themselves, market themselves, advertise themselves, and come up with an app product.
For your comments, your time is complete.
Idea that they can, they can make it come from.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming tonight.
Next speaker is Tyler Aguilar. Brendan Blue. Javon Wilks.
There's Brendan, there's Brendan Blue.
And no Tyler?
Hi, Brendan.
Brendan Blue.
Mayor Steinberg, good evening, city council members. I'm Brendan Blue with the community group Neighbors for Shared Schoolyards. We advocate for the joint use of schoolyards throughout the district, focusing initially on underserved areas when schools are not in session to improve the mental and physical health, community connection, and public school support. The conservative estimate so far that I've looked at is that at least 70% of our public schools are gatedlocked over the weekends, and so informal use by our residents is not possible. I'm thrilled to see the deep commitment to parks and youth programs in this budget. There's no mention of schoolyards as parks or assistance to the district to do that. I think there are opportunities to meet the city's goals around equity commitments and the district needs, and I'd really like to work with you this coming year on that. I'm really excited that the district and the city formed a work group to see how to overcome the barriers to this kind of partnership to using schoolyards as parks, and I'd like to be part of that conversation. So if someone could let me know how to do that, I'd like to learn how.
Okay. Be in touch.
Thank you.
Okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Javon Wilks. And Nova Holly.
Wilks?
Yes. Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Council. My name is Javon Wilks. I'm with the California Coalition for Youth, and we're an organization that has advocated for the last 37 years for disconnected, runaway, and homeless youth. And I'm here today to say that five years ago, I was a youth, and at the age of 14, I experienced homelessness, under the rain, hot sun, during the holidays. And it's unacceptable for it to continue to be an invisible population when we talk about serving our youth. And so, I am very hopeful that we are moving in the right direction. It's a matter of how fast and who we're going to bring along to make sure that our youth are all counted as solutions and economical opportunities of growth for our city. So thank you so much for your time, and let's make sure that our youth that are experiencing homelessness tonight, tomorrow, and the next day are served under your guidance. Thank you.
Thank you.
Nova Holly is our final speaker on this item.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. My name is Nova Holly Brookins. I originally had not intended on speaking. I was here earlier and listening to a lot of the comments and people advocating on behalf of the arts programs. I decided to speak because it correlates to what I was here to support. As someone who has worked closely with Crocker Art Museum on the Art Impact Collective, as well as a partner with The Promise Zone, I, a few years ago, received a community-based grant from First Five Sacramento for a program that I developed to help teach math and numbers to students under the age of five using music and dance, as well as a choreographer in NSA Studios, a choreographer for Hundreds Unit, where we're a network of hundreds of women who work out together, together for fitness, health, to perform at major events. There is an intersectionality, there is a correlation between arts programs, youth economic development, community development, all of those things go hand in hand, so I am here to advocate for support of these programs and increase in funding for the arts programs and everything that will help to employ our youth, get them engaged in their community as well as their city. And in closing, I would just like to read a letter sent to Councilman Warren's office. Dear Councilmember Warren, on behalf of Sacramento City District Two Partners and Stakeholders, Fiscal Agent, the Healing Five Foundation, I am requesting funding for Summer Nights Remix, my excellency's define, the Community Summer Program formerly known as Nightlife Turn Right, a collaborative effort between various community organizations such as Glow, Brother to Brother, Strawberry Matters Association, Mutual Assistance Network, Sister to Sister, the Sacramento Police Department, and the MONG Organization for Progress and Empowerment. Your support means economic sustainability, building relationships between law enforcement and those they serve. In addition to positively engaging neighborhood youth and their communities, are a few of the needs the Summer Nights Remix program is charged with meeting. Thank you for your support. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is that the, very good. Let's, thank you for the public testimony. Let's turn it back now to the City Council, Councilmember Harris.
Thank you, Mayor. Shannon, your presentation was almost exclusively about youth and youth programs. Of course, we can't forget you're still our Parks Department. And nowhere did you mention anything about park rangers or park maintenance. To me, a measure of success for the Parks Department would be when adopt-part programs are no longer needed. I'm on my eighth year of maintaining my local park, and I have to tell you that volunteerism is waning. It's harder and harder to find people to come to parks' cleanups, so we're like, we are relying ironically, almost exclusively on youth, you know, to perform community service hours to help us with that effort. So I would like for you to speak about the Parks Department's aspect of how to improve maintenance, how to keep the bathrooms cleaner, and how to, how we can get to the point where we're not relying on volunteer labor to maintain our parks.
Very good point. I did mention in the beginning that, you know, Measure U did support a variety of programs, definitely park maintenance being one of them. And, you know, our system has grown over the years, but the finances have not grown with it, and we have heavily relied on our volunteers and our landscaping and learning program. What we are really striving to do is set a standard of what is a safe, maintained park, so we need to create a standard of what that means, and we need to at least hit that minimum. So if it's mowing once a week, we have to make sure, how do we, how do we get to that? But we also have to be creative on, and how we're, on how we're accomplishing those goals. And it could, it's a combination of contracted services, staff services. I mean, I really would love to say that we would never have to have volunteers again. I just, you know, being a general-funded department and, you know, not knowing what your budget is from year to year, we're always going to have to rely on the community. But I think what we need to do is we need to really study where we're at with the total number of parks, total number of acreage, and put that against national standards and see where we, where we're at. And then from there, we can create benchmarks of, you know, how many staff does it need, do we need to maintain, to mow parks? How many staff does it need to clean and maintain restrooms? How, you know, how many staff do we need to make sure our community gardens are maintained and in our facilities?
Well, so that's exactly what the council needs so that we can fund you appropriately.
Absolutely.
You know, it gets to Councilmember Carr's discussion from earlier today, without a set of goals, how do we know what we're trying to fund? So do you have at this juncture the means to create the study and set, set those performance targets and correlate performance metrics so we know where we're falling short and what we need to supply to YIPSI so that you can maintain our parks properly and well?
Absolutely. With our reorganization, we were really able to take a hard look at how we were structured, and Eugene Low, our park manager, has been doing an excellent job in trying to stretch resources as much as he can. He has been looking at those standards and creating, and looking at creating that benchmark. So that is something that, with creating policies and procedures and efficiencies, that we will be looking at this year.
So, well, when? I mean, here we are in budget time, when we could be allocating resources to you to hit those benchmarks, and yet we don't have them.
Right. And I do have to say, we were very lucky and during mid-year to get increased funding to maintain our parks for the mowing once a week, which was really helpful. Couple years ago, Measure U did do a huge surge, gave us a lot of resources so we could hit those needs of making sure that at least litter was picked up once a day, and at least that we had the restrooms cleaned. But the challenge is, is we continue to grow our park system, but the money doesn't come with it. So when we grow our park system, the, the resources are thin, so we really need to, you know, take a hard look at that, and, and we will, and we have. We've done 20 years of research from the 80s showing, you know, we were spiked up, and then with the recession, we've never hit the numbers that we need to hit for staff. But I do have to say, we would do stuff, we would have to do it differently. Technology is a huge part of work order systems and making sure that we can, you know, get the appropriate staff out there efficiently, so, you know, we're excited to be able to tackle this.
Well, I think it's imperative that you get on it right away, and I would like a briefing as soon as possible about what data you have right now in terms of benchmarks and how we fit locally. But I can tell you that the community feels that their parks are not adequately maintained. I get this kind of feedback constantly. And again, the fact of the matter is, I've been running a volunteer crew for eight years to maintain not one park, but a couple. So, you know, this is a very key discussion to, to a budget discussion about how to adequately fund your department. If you're finding you're deficient, and you just said that you, you are, then clearly you have some idea of where you would like to get to, and you're not there yet. I have the same feeling. So I think this discussion needs to be soon, and it needs to be very high up on your list of things to accomplish, because if you don't present to the council exactly what you need and the targets you're trying to, to reach to justify us allocating funds to you, you won't get them.
And, and I do have to say, working with facilities, we had, we have done a facility assessment that shows how much deferred maintenance we have for our parks, how much deferred maintenance we have for facilities, and how much deferred maintenance we have for pools. And yes, the amount is very high, and, and we do need to figure out how we're going to tackle that, or we, we will continue to not be able to provide a quality-level service that we want to provide for the city.
So, Mr. City Manager, I'd like to suggest to you that you work with the Parks Department, and you get those metrics together for presentation to the council, or we just won't move forward. I mean, we know that we have needs in our parks, but this council hasn't received a robust presentation, certainly in this budget season, about exactly what those needs are. I would like to see it as soon as possible.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Carr?
Thank you, Mayor. Ibet, Councilmember Harris, it's a question that I think we came in at the same time and had the same issue. What makes a good park? And how do you tell if a park is a good park or not a good park? And I've, I know Shannon has struggled with this, and Chris has struggled with this as well, and we need to kind of get our head around that. How do we know if a park is good? I think someone had a suggestion, if you see women with strollers at the park, it's a good park. If you see guys camping out, it's a bad park. And that's the best definition I've received so far. But let me ask you a couple...
If Larry Carr is playing basketball at the park, it's a good park.
Say again?
If Larry Carr is playing basketball at the park, it's a good park.
It's an amazing park, if you see me playing basketball. And the other question that I'm struggling with, with the programs, and I don't expect you to answer it now, is how will our youth be different because we have this program? And getting them trained is not really an answer. It has to be trained for some reason. And so, I, I think the question other than how do you tell a good park, is all the programs that you're... the programs that you're running, what difference does it make? How will our young people be different? I think that's the question we need to answer from the council. But a specific question on the after-school youth sports programs, you mentioned three places, Natomas, Robles, and Twin River. What about the other places?
Those are the areas that we do not have programs. We have a robust middle school, after-schools program in a lot of other districts, yours in particular, so we just did not have them in the Natomas-
Ones that you're filling in.
Correct. These are just the areas that we do not currently program them in, and, and we would like to bring those to the community.
And has there been any consideration for a citywide basketball, baseball league?
Well, we do have an adults, youth, or adult sport program where we do offer softball, baseball, and kickball for youth, so it's, it's open to anybody.
I mean, where the kids from Meadowview can play, the kids from Oak Park can play the kids from Del Paso in one league?
Oh, yeah. You know, we do that with our hotspot programs. We have a tournament where the kids can go and participate. So, yeah, I mean, it would be great if we could expand, especially our middle school youth sports program. We would do that. We, we love to have tournaments where we're bringing, you know, neighborhoods together in, in one area, so, you know, you get to, to meet new people and, and experience new areas of the city. So we, I mean, that is what we're, what we'd like to do with our-
This budget just doesn't resource that.
Right.
So I, I think the next budget, we need to ask to resource that. I think it's actually a gang prevention program. When you have youth from one part of the city interacting with youth from another part of the city, they become your friends, that your competitors, people that you respect, you don't want to shoot them because you're going to be playing basketball against them next week.
Yeah, and we do that with our hotspot program. Our tournaments are very successful because, you know, kids from Oak Park are, are playing, you know, kids from Hagenwood and Del Paso or North Natomas, and, and they're meeting people that they may, maybe never would have met, and they're, you know, seeing a, a part of the city maybe they've, they've never seen. And, and that is the one unique thing about what we provide is, is not only do we provide safe places, but we provide social interaction. And as you heard in our testimony, a lot of you feel safe coming to our centers, so we have to leverage that, and we have to take advantage of it. We not, might not be, you know, creating the next IT person, but we might give them the confidence and skills that they need to, to take that step, and, and that's what we want to do. We want to provide a safe and nurturing environment for youth to feel confident that they can, you know, enter the workforce or the life and, and succeed.
I would definitely be supportive of a youth program that fielded teams from various communities to play against each other all over the city.
With your support of-
If you do that next year, I would be in support.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilmember Hanson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would just like to thank you for all the work you and your staff are doing, Shannon. I know that there's always this effort to try to fix all the things from the past while we try to do all these new things, and I think your department with very little resources does a lot. The number of parks, the number of acres, the programs, community centers, and I think it's reflected in, in the quality of product we get. But one of the things I mentioned earlier, Mr. City Manager, on the budget is that here we have about $2.4 million for increased community centers, maintaining hotspots, doing other things. I see that as part of inclusive economic development, supporting disadvantaged populations in our city, at-risk youth being one of the key ones, and again, it's very hard to look at this budget and know what our investments are in disadvantaged communities unless you're willing to go page by page and pull them out. But I think this presentation showed us that beyond even that $2.4 million, the Parks Department is doing so much. And again, I would encourage you and your staff to go through and pull that out and tell that story, because a lot of people don't know that we're adding all these services and doing these more programs unless they're using them. And I think we've got to tell that story more effectively.
Thank you. Councilmember Warren?
Shannon, I, I want to thank you and staff as well, the parks, I know you're working very hard, but I do want to echo my colleague, Mr. Harris's comments about parks and park rangers. I think, you know, parks are really a valuable treasure that people typically don't have to pay any money to go and experience and enjoy, and, and I believe in some parts of our city, we've not really allowed for people to come and, and feel like it's a welcoming place. You know, I have one or two in my district that I think could use some, some serious assistance, and so I want to advocate for some additional, and I think we need to have, you know, a more structured program where we have park rangers at the parks with the community centers and the management there, maybe for a year or two, or however long it takes to really reassume, you know, kind of the ownership, that that park belongs to everybody in the community and not just a select group of people who tend to dominate it, and sometimes they're not doing the most appropriate things in the park. So I think it's very important, so I'd be supportive for additional assistance in, in District Two. And I also want to just note that we had a young lady come up, Nova Brookins, and advocate for, in our community, we call it Nightlife Turn Right, which was our summer program that we did at the Robinson Community Center. It budgeted about $100, $120,000, and we had them in several districts up until this year. We, we have a, the, the youth pop-up stuff, which is, I think, very effective, and, and I'm very supportive of that. But I also believe that when we have programs that are working, we need to keep those programs going as opposed to diffusing them and, and pulling resources and putting it somewhere else, and so I'm going to be an advocate for, for that nightlife program. It's about a 10-week, 12-week program, about 10 weeks actually, from, I think, mid-June to kind of mid to late August. And so I want to, I want to encourage the city manager to help us identify $100,000 to $120,000 to support our nightlife. And I will say, to the young people's credit in Nova, and there's a team, they've been working on this, knowing that we may not get the resources to do it. So they've been working, putting all the pieces together to really manage and put together a very substantial summer program for our young people. And in District Two, having a program that stays open to nine, 10 o'clock at night on the weekends, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, or Thursday, Friday, Saturday, whichever three days they choose, is very substantial, and it is at a, it's at a very positive impact.
We do, with this current budget request for the expansion of hotspots, it would serve your community because it would go directly into Hagenwood Community Center. We are, you know, excited to be able to kind of take the program out of Grant, because there's lots of amazing programs there and, and move over to-
Which one is in, at Grant?
So we used to do hotspots in, in, at Grant High School-
Oh, at Grant West?
Oh, Grant West, sorry.
Yeah, Grant West.
And then we have since relocated to Hagenwood, and, you know, with your support, we would love to expand the programming out there, but also, you know, our partners are invaluable. The Summer Nightlife program has provided-
And the nightlife program is done currently, or had been done at the Robinson Community Center, and so I'd like to find the resources to continue to support a working program that our community has really, and it's multi-ethnic. It's, it's, it's been supported by a broad base of our community, and it's something that has really made a difference, so I'm going to be looking to, to city staff and the mayor and the council to support that as well. Thank you.
Good. Thank you. Councilmember Warren. Vice Mayor Gueda?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll keep it short since we've got a whole nother council meeting after this. I want to thank Shannon, all your staff, particularly even just throughout the year in working with all of our Little League partners and whatnot to make sure that we're, that as they're putting in their own sweat equity, we're helping them move through them, through their, their, their needs. I also want to sound, express my support for the budget recognition of the changes that the California Department of Ed had made, and I think this, the ensuring that our students and families that are in the subsidy program can stay on for another year so that, while we find the transition for them is important. And long-term, I think, just encouraging the support for our Fourth R program. I know I've, I've met a lot of colleagues and coworkers who, they've only been able to continue in their career growth and profession because of after-school programs like Fourth R, but ensuring that we have this allocation there for, for this year is, is important.
Councilmember Gara, really, last minute, the state was able to take the families that were supported from the CCTR grant and directly move them over to Child Action Grant, which is-
Oh, great.
Yes, which is amazing because there will be no loss of, of any childcare for those families. So unfortunately, we just didn't have enough time to officially change it in the budget book, but that is good news for, for everybody.
So you're saying we can move this to another Little League program that somebody else needs, then?
I only make the recommendations.
That's right. Well, that is great news, given this, this state budget, but I do, again, want to recognize the fact that you guys took it upon yourself to say, hey, we need to figure out some kind of transition for these families who are in subsidy. And, you know, for the Fourth R program, again, it's like, you know, a lot of working-class families who, this is a, this is an opportunity for them to have a positive place for their youth, but also an opportunity for them to have two-income households that can, that can be out there earning a living for the family. So thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Councilman Shanier?
Thank you, Mayor. So I also want to say thank you and thank the city manager and Mr. Conlon. I mean, this is a significant increase in what we're doing for young people in the city, and I think it's incredibly important. Big surprise coming from me on that, right? But, so, so I appreciate it, and I also understand that it's been a year of transition. You have a lot of institutional knowledge that have retired, and I know some of them are coming back as retired annuities, which is great on the quality issue, I appreciate that. And you've got a lot of new people there, so it's going to take some effort to really move this forward in the way that we, we really wanted to move forward. I do have a couple of comments, and I appreciate the presentation, because I found some things that were missing for me within the actual budget document, so I want to kind of walk through that. The first thing is, I, I do appreciate the video that you had, and Zuri is one of my youth commissioners, very intelligent young man in Oak Park. Did you actually take the budget to the youth commission for any review or comment? And this is, this is the culture change that we need to do, so I don't know if that was something that happened at all? Or is that something that we can make sure we do as we go forward?
And I, I don't want to misspeak, but I believe Kim Muller, before she left, did give a high-level overview of the recommendations to the youth commission, and unfortunately, I don't think I'd be able to ask her that. I can get that information back to you.
That's fine. I think just as we go forward, I have in my office, like, did you ask the youth commission? It's a question that we always try to go to when we talk about what's going to impact young people. It's like any group that we are going to impact with policies that we make, we should bring them to the table and ask them, and I think they could be very helpful. And I'm going to come back to that a little bit when we talk about quality. I did note that in the budget itself, there really wasn't any mention of the, the youth development campaign and the work that was done. I know you, you mentioned it in your presentation, so I appreciate that. I think there's a lot of work in there that really can be embedded within the quality standards that you're working on, and then also in the metrics that you choose. The five pieces around youth development, to me, is what makes a quality program. That's not me, actually, that's 30 years of research, and so if, as you are developing, and I hope there's a dashboard that gets developed for the department, and it would include the parks piece that Mr. Harris was talking about, but as we do that, I want to make sure that the, the work of the 40 nonprofits that got together and, and developed that piece of work, that that's included in there as we go forward. So that's, that's really important. I'm kind of going chronologically in the book. I want to ask the city manager if we could, I know that we have four golf courses in the department that are, were contracted out with Morton Golf, and I'm wondering if we can get a report back on the status of those golf courses, how they're doing, and I know Morton files reports with you guys or somebody here, so if we could either get copies of those or find out kind of where we are on those courses, that would be great. I want to, on the aquatics division, and I, I'm excited about a lot of the numbers that we have here and the number of youth that we're being able to serve, and the aquatics has been a push, I know, for the last few years to make sure we have enough lifeguards and all of that. Do you collect information or do you collect data on who they are, the demographics of those? How many young people of color do we have? How many are at the Meadowview Pool versus other pools? How specific do we get on that?
Well, the, these are city employees, so there, there is some data collected, but kind of a bigger vision, what we're working on is, with Lindy, the youth policy manager, is creating the youth data portal, and that is what we ultimately need to do to, to collect that information and then be able to report back on those demographics.
Okay, so if, if we could get that also as we go, and I know Lindy has a ways to go on that, but I think it's really important, particularly like the lifeguard program where we're really trying to outreach to the community. We have large parts of some of our communities that don't use the pools, so I think teaching swimming and teaching lifeguarding is, is really a, a big aspect of that, so I'd love to see data on that one. On the hotspots, I appreciate the expansion of the hotspots, I think that's really important, giving our young people safe places to be at night, particularly later in the evening. I want to make sure, if we go forward with the pop-ups, and I think the mayor's going to talk about that when we get to the 11 million, or the 51 million, or the 40 million, whatever we're talking about, I want to make sure that those things are aligned between what we're doing on the pop-ups and what we're doing on the hotspots. We should look, I think, geographically, so one or the other is filling in, in places where the other isn't, and I think we also need to look at kind of the content and the subject areas that they're doing, because you may have very different curricula at, if you want to call it that, at, or, or just what the young people are doing, and they may, they may be okay to be close together if they're doing very different things for different populations. So I want to make sure that those are coordinated. I want to just give a shout out to your big three. I thought that was great, and we have some of you guys here today, and the big three is YPC, Police and Fire. That Lindy has brought those folks together to talk about quality and the programs that we're doing, and I, I use our meeting all the time. I think it was great, as I think both the police and fire departments were getting a little bit of education around youth development and how their programs could, I think, attain a higher quality level, and I, I appreciate you guys being open to doing that, I think that's really important. Again, I, I mentioned it, the, the youth development campaign work, really embedding that into the quality standards that we're doing, and then also as we, as we put together your metrics, because you don't, you really don't have any in the youth division, you have one piece that's old around the middle schools. As we do that, and I'm going to suggest that you ask the youth commission for help on doing the standards and doing the metrics, I think they know as well as anybody what we should be measuring, and so we should really get their input on that. The last couple of things here, I, I mentioned when, when Michael Jasso was testifying before at the podium about the connection between what you're doing and what we're doing on workforce development within his department or division. So if we can coordinate that, I think that's going to be really important. As we're doing more youth development, as we're teaching more skills, they should be aligned with the skills that young people need to get jobs as we go forward. Did you want to say something on that?
Thank you. If I could just make a couple of comments real quick. So it's been alluded to by several of the council members, and I think Councilmember Shanier mostly talked a lot about it. You just received a brief from the Department of Youth Parks and Community Enrichment, and the council challenged the city to come up with a bid for how to do youth development better. This is one component. What we're not briefing you on today, but is also included in the budget, is increased funding that is going to Lindy Lane, who is our, she, she runs youth development for the city, she's the policy manager. Councilmember Shanier mentioned she chairs the big three, but that's just one of the things she does. She also provides oversight on everything you're doing. On the next meeting, you will see that there are a couple of agenda items, at least one is funding that we're providing to, to the Simmons Community Center for a host of youth development projects. Those are all under the same umbrella of the youth policy, the youth development policy this council voted in. So we are stitching all of that together. There is nothing we are doing anymore in the city that is not beholden to that particular policy. That's the outline. We're in the nascent stages, though, you know, as you suggested, Councilmember Shanier, you know, things like pop-ups, we wrote that contract, they're under that umbrella, but we're still sorting out what that looks like on the ground. To your question, the youth policy, the youth development policy manager, Lindy Lane, part of her funding is to develop those metrics that we're going to use across the city, so that we make sure that- city, so that we make sure that everything is being weighed by the same measures, so that we can actually analyze it and come up with that. We do have integration coming to us from the youth council on that, where they are absolute partners with us, but the intention is to create this as one holistic thing, and to the point of, you asked, you know, what's our goal, right, for what we're doing in youth development? I'll be honest with you, a major portion of our goal is employment. It's to make these young, these youth in our city employable in whatever they want to do. You heard discussions of the arts. You've heard discussions about getting into the economy. That's really our measure of whether we have done what we need to do right. You know, the primetime teens, a lot of these other programs, landscape and learning, all of those things. And that is where the workforce development that is going to be in Mike Jasso's plan is integrated with what we're doing, and Lindy Lane is meeting with them, she's talking to them, so we are trying to figure out how to do this whole concept of cradle to career in everything we're doing. So, that's a missing component that we've ducked out.
So, I appreciate the holistic look at it, because we are generally siloed into departments, but I think that's why it's so important when you have the Big Three. Maybe we can make the Big Three the Big Four and include Mike Jasso's people in that.
They will be, yeah.
That would be great. Two more things really quickly, and Shannon, thank you, these are just, so one thing I want to bring, as we are starting to do this, and I've talked about this a little bit, and Mr. Hanson was kind enough to mention it a couple of times at our last meeting. We've been working with RT and the school districts to try to design a program where all K-12 kids who either live in the city or go to school in the city can ride public transit for free. It would be a million-dollar a year for the city, the RT would pick up the rest. They feel like they would go from 7,500 young people to 25,000 a year doing that, and so these would be all kids in all districts, citywide, so adding 17,500 kids to ride public transit, to get to school, to get to work. We know the schools would benefit. It's one of the biggest problems that kids miss schools, because they don't have transportation to get there. It also gets them to work if they're going to work, and gets them to our pop-ups and extracurricular activities. So, I'm going to be asking for that next week. And then finally, what I'd like to do, and I don't know, I'll talk to the city manager later as well, this is kind of a lead-in to our next department as well, we think of public safety as police and fire, and I think that's incredibly important. Public safety, to me, is also what are we doing for our young people to keep them out of trouble or out of getting into trouble? And so, I'd like us to think about how we define public safety and at some point have that discussion as we go forward. But thank you for all your work on this. I'm excited about where we are, and I'm more excited about where we're going. I know we have a lot of work to do. I know you've got a lot of really good people who you've brought into the department who care deeply about these issues and are very, very committed, from the folks who run the youth commission to Lindy, to all of your new folks in your management positions, and also those who are on the ground every day dealing with our young people and supporting them. So, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Chenier. Councilmember Ashby.
Thank you, Mayor. Shannon, thank you for your great work, and Chris also in parks. Obviously, this time last year and maybe even before that, we were really pushing you to change the whole department to this youth parks and community enrichment, and so I know that has just sort of upended everything, but you're doing a really great job with it, and I think it shows. So, the fact that tonight you are somewhat being criticized for being overly focused on youth, I think is kind of fun, because, you know, there was this big push to have you have youth out front, literally in your name and everything, and it appears to me that you are doing that, so good for you. Along with Councilmember Hanson, I agree, the 2.4 million is incredibly important here. The community center hours and what that means for additional pool hours and the hotspots and primetime teen are great programs, and that in collaboration with what this budget does for libraries, which opens the libraries more, gives people in communities access to things like free Wi-Fi and computers and places they can do job searches and applications and homework and get the help they need for school or whatever else, right in their neighborhoods. So, I think that is a critical part of this, and Councilmember Chenier's right, I mean, that is prevention, if, even if it's not, if it's not public safety in terms of enforcement, it is certainly public safety in terms of opportunity, and so I think we should definitely be counting that in. I'm anxious to have a community center to keep open longer and a pool to have open at all, so I'm looking forward to the later discussion about council priorities, so that my district can begin to have some of those things and talk about how we can fill those spaces with the programs as well. I also support Councilmember Chenier's idea of the million dollars for students, and it'll be a little disproportionate. For example, my district doesn't have much of a bus route. The buses only come about a third of the way in, but that's okay.
Right, but you do have microtransit up there, and that would be eligible.
Or not, Thomas, you mean the jibe would be included?
Yeah.
Oh, that's great.
That's my goal.
But I think, even if it wasn't, I think it's really important, especially getting around the central city and especially getting from Meadowview to downtown. I think that's critical, and, you know, I've been, I have been a critic of not getting jump bikes and other things out there like that. I think this is another way to address it, to make sure that our transportation system is working for everyone. So, when the council priorities come, Councilmember Chenier, you can count on my support for that one, too, because I think it's important. I also think, a few things, first of all, I know Councilmember Gera touched on this, but it like can't be stated enough how important that was in your leadership, Shannon, in moving the 4th R funding over to Child Action, because every year, this council has grappled with about a $2 million gap on 4th R that is really, really important for all of us. Nobody, we spent the last hour talking about childcare, and this was one that you always had to find, and so you getting that shift and figuring that out is really a testament to your leadership of this department, so good work on that. When, a lot of what you have proposed, and you and Chris have proposed for this year, is planning-oriented, which I really like, you're looking at program quality standards. I think this is important, because we have so many people that we give money to, and I think we want to set a really high standard for what they deliver back or what our expectation is. So, if we give to community partner X and we give to community partner Y in two different neighborhoods, that the quality of service that the kids are getting in those neighborhoods is somehow monitored by the city of Sacramento since we're the funder, and so I look forward to your, the outcomes of this year's work on that study and what that would give for us next year. And a lot of the things that I hear, like Councilmember Chenier and the mayor wanting to do with building those community partnerships, could be bolstered by your work, because over time we would identify which partners are producing. Me, I think anecdotally, we think we know in our districts, but to have that data would be really valuable to this city moving forward, and so I think that's great. I do want to support Councilmember Warren's Night Life Made Right program. I think that and Summer Night Lights in District A are just really great, successful programs, and so to the extent that we can fund those, I think we always should. A personal plug from me, I could never be the council member that I want to be in my district without the park maintenance crews, and there's some additional funding in my district that provides some additional help. I honestly don't know how the rest of the city does it without that extra help. To that point, I have volunteered to be on Councilmember Carr's committee, because I personally think, and I would love it if you can do this in some of your cost recovery analysis or, you know, your quality assessments that you're doing this year, what is the standard that we want to achieve for maintenance in parks? How often do we mow? What do we do for caring for baseball diamonds? What, you know, which ones need bathrooms, and how often are they clean, and that kind of thing? I know the standard for me and my district and with my constituents is very, very high. And sometimes, I think, in the city over the years, and I'm not saying we're doing it now, but I have seen as a council member on this dais where sometimes it's like we want to lower our standards and then we bring everybody down to that. I think we should choose the highest standard and seek to achieve that in every district so that the experiences that people are having are uniformly positive in these parks. So, if one park has needles and trash, then we probably need additional resources in that park for a cleanup every morning, so that kids can have the same experience that they would have in another neighborhood where there isn't that blight. So, I would love to see, in some of the analysis that you're doing this year, some of your suggestions on creating some standards, maybe with some input from Councilmember Carr's committee. And then lastly, also in that analysis, I'd love you to keep a keen eye on Title IX. So, as we're looking at the inventory in the city, do we have adequate facilities for boys and girls? Are the softball fields equal to the baseball diamonds? Are the programs open to boys and girls of all ages? Are we building parks unintentionally that favor one group over another? I'd like us to be keenly aware of how we're handling that and how we, as a city, are encouraging girls to participate in play just as much as we're encouraging boys. So, if you can help us keep an eye on that, I'm really proud of our Parks Department, and you in particular. I think you're a great leader. I feel like I have a great relationships with the park maintenance people in my district, and they all value you personally greatly, and I think that is a testament to you as well, Shannon, so congratulations on your hard work.
Thank you. Councilmember Jennings.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to join in with the congratulations. I was looking at the statistics, 5,000 additional hours, 37% more, hotspots, community center hotspots for 16, 17-year-olds, primetime teens, after-school youth programs in underserved communities. I mean, just incredible, incredible results. 2,090 maintenance projects that were done over, from 2017 to 2018, well, actually, 2,090 done in 2018, more than was done in 2017. So, a 72% increase, congratulations. I've often said that our parks have to meet today's need for parents of today, and so what we're doing, it looks like we're looking at these parks and finding out what we need to do in order to improve them, so again, congratulations. I only have a couple of questions. My first one was spurred by Councilmember Warren when he talked about the north area, Summer Nights Gone Right, and in the south area, we have Summer Night Lights in Valley High. And I've gone through this budget, trying to see where it says that we're going to continue funding that program. I can't find it. So, I just want to know, was it taken out or will it be continued, and I just can't find it under another area?
We did partner with Mack Road Foundation, and they are continuing our Meadowview programming at Pennell Community Center. So, that is, it's not at the Mack Road Partnership location, but we've moved it over to our community center, and it was a program that we worked on last year to incorporate, like a three-day, more of like hotspot, but family-oriented events. So, we have moved that over to Pennell, and Macro Partnership Partners are running that, going to run that program for us this summer.
Yeah, so I guess I'm very concerned about that move, because I wasn't aware that it went to Pennell Center and not going to be at Valley High. We're talking about two different populations of parents and kids completely. We're talking about kids that live in Valley High that can't even walk to the Pennell Center, and so they would have to find other ways to get there. That does concern me. We had a very successful program at the Valley High Center, and the investment that the Kings made in the basketball court and the investment that the community has made in the whole area there, it just concerns me that we're not continuing that program.
This program was kind of maybe through the city manager's, the funding through the city manager's office, so I was tasked to kind of work on the Pennell project that was started from last year, so I'm not sure if I.
And I'll talk to the city manager and the mayor, I think he's going to speak on it as well, but that program has been going on for how long now?
Five, six years.
Five, six years. And I would, you know, if I were to talk to the Sacramento Police Department, who have raved about the success that we've had in that program, for the first time, I believe it was last year, we had zero homicides in that area as a result of the program that we had there, so it just, it's a successful program, and I guess I would ask my colleagues to support in trying to bring that program back, as opposed to seeing it go to another area and expecting kids to get there. So, that would be my request for that, because I do think these programs are very powerful. And you're right, when you're taking kids and giving them something to do on Thursday, Friday, Saturday nights, as opposed to just roaming the streets and causing havoc, it keeps our community much safer and our department, the police department, is not as busy. So, I wanted to just kind of talk about that, because I couldn't find it, and so shame on me for not looking for it earlier. I apologize.
I'll back you up on that.
Okay. So, a couple of other things. I've given you the accolades on all the great things that we've done so far, and now I want to kind of give you the challenge. And the challenge, I heard Councilmember Chenier speak to it before, on the youth pop-ups and the safe zones that we created in our community, and trying to somehow align those to what we're doing with our hotspots and our programs at our community centers, and taking advantage of the important work that the community-based organizations did for us at a very critical time in Sacramento. I want to make sure that we continue those programs. They are extremely successful, and I want to make sure that we continue them and try to find a way to make that happen. And then the ultimate challenge that I have for you has to do with Mr. Morton, who's in the back, back there, as far as our golf programs are concerned. So, not only our golf programs, but also our tennis programs. Mr. Morton, I'm not certain that I've ever seen, in the drive-chip-and-putt contest, someone from the city of Sacramento compete at the Masters for, one of our kids competing at the Masters in that program. Did I just miss it?
You got to come on up, you got to come on up here, Mr. Morton.
Mr. Mayor and Council, Mr. Jennings, we have several kids participating in the PGA Junior League, and we actually are hosting three different drive-chip-and-putts right at Hagan Oaks and the city golf courses. So, we're very involved in those programs. We really believe in those programs, and there's several events, and you'll see some of our kids at the Masters shortly.
That's good. So, I think the thing that you've talked to me about over the years, because I've been working with you for a while, but you've talked to me about kids not coming from the underserved communities, playing the game of golf, and not having the opportunity to be able to do so. And so, I think this is where my challenge to the Youth Parks and Community Engagement and Richment Department is, I believe Sacramento should have a first-class golf program for our kids, where they can learn the game of golf in the programs that we already currently have and the environments that we already currently have, on the fields that we already currently have. And I know that there are opportunities to be able to bring small, minor, one-hole, two-hole type places where kids can learn the game, and I don't think that that's happening right now. And the same thing is happening in tennis, and I know the United States Tennis Association is very much interested in Sacramento, the capital of the state of California, being a city that would lead the way for the rest of the country to understand how kids can stay involved and engage in the game of tennis and learn to enjoy that sport that has been around for years, but it has fallen short to baseball, football, track, and basketball. And so, between the golf and the tennis, my challenge would be, next year, for us to see if we could develop a program under Youth Parks and Community Enrichment that would allow us to expose the game especially to underserved kids.
Mr. Jennings, I'd like to, what I'd like to do is, I think, we as golfers, we've kind of been in the background for a long time, but you have in the city of Sacramento one of the finest youth golf programs in the nation already, and we are working hand-in-hand with Shannon and Barbara and the team there to be able to get, to cross-market our programs so that we become more of the city programs, and we should be part, more of the city programs. But I would like to maybe challenge the department to be able to come in here and explain to the council just what you have in Sacramento already, because we are known by the PGA of America and the USGA as having the strongest youth golf program in America, and we need to let you know what you have already.
And that would be great, because as a golfer, and I'm sure there are other golfers on this council, and those of us who are wannabe golfers, I don't think we know of that program, and I also want to make sure that it is serving all the areas of Sacramento, especially the underserved areas.
And we're with you there, and you know as well as we do that we have a thing called the Morton Golf Foundation that raises $250,000 a year to put into youth programs, and we. the Morton Golf Foundation that raises $250,000 a year to put into youth programs, and we want to continue to grow that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Morton. Thank you. Councilmember Jennings. Councilmember Carr, did you have one other? Because then I have one, and then we're going to close this.
I'd like to quickly address the Summer Night Lights program on Mac. It wasn't in the budget. We have provided a copy of those things that we thought were omitted to both you and the city manager and plan to bring them up.
We're going to include it.
Counsel comments. And we have an issue with Summer Night Lights especially because we approved the budget in June, but these organizations have to start gearing up in April to run the program. So we're going to have to figure out a funding mechanism so that they know the money is there so they can make obligations when they need to, to have the program ready in the summer.
Right. It's, so, last word here, and then we'll adjourn this meeting. Again, a very good discussion, and I want to just, again, commend the progress that's being made here, both organizationally in terms of shifting the focus, if you will, towards this youth development focus that the council asked you to do. And secondly, City Manager is Brown, the increased amount of investment, which is good. But again, I do think we need to put this into some context here in terms of asking the question, are we doing enough for our young people when it comes to our investments? And so I'm pleased, on the one hand, that we go from six hotspot events per month to 17. But let's break that down for a moment. If there are eight or nine weekend nights a month, that's two events per weekend night a month. This is a big city, and there are a lot of young people that need safe places to recreate and to learn and to be safe and grow. And so we did pioneer in the midst of very difficult times in Sacramento, working with the Sierra Health Foundation, all our community partners here, this idea of pop-ups. Now, I know the vernacular is different. I mean, nightlife turned right, right on. We need to do more of that. Summer night lights, we need to do more of that. Right on. Pop-ups, we need to do more of that. But the real question here is, are we committing to having multiple safe spaces in 10 to 15 places in our city every single weekend? And what is it going to take to finance that, especially given that we have good nonprofit partners out there that are willing to genuinely partner with us? But there's nothing in this budget that is reflective of that continuing partnership. And so I want to bring that back as an action item, if you will, touching on these very important programs, but also suggesting, again, that as we think long-term in our budget, not just one year, that we begin to embed these kinds of partnerships as a way of doing business. Same thing with primetime teen. What a great program, and you should be commended, 120 to 240. But then let's step back and be honest. We're only providing workforce development for 240 teens in the city, plus L and L? What about Thousand Strong? I know that was a mayoral initiative, but we've placed hundreds of young people in year-round jobs. I'd see that funded another year and have that be embedded as a, as a community-city partnership going forward. And that may find itself on a list as well. But I think the message here is that while it is great and important to increase these publicly funded and publicly run hotspots, that we want to catalyze this public money as much as possible. And Councilmember Carr, you always talk about what is the objective here? I'm going to state one. We want 10 to 15 places every Friday and Saturday night for young people in our community to have a great time, to learn, to engage in athletics or arts or any other enriching and constructive activity. 10 to 15. 10 to 15 every Friday and Saturday night. And so everything we do with the community-based organizations within our city budget ought to be directed towards that goal. Now, if you have a different goal, Councilmember Carr, other members, that's fine. But that's what we actually set out to do in the midst of the Stefan Clark chapter. And we put the money together, a little public money, a little private money, a little community money, and boom, we went. And it ends June 30. Now what? I say we answer that question in the affirmative here as part of this budget. And that would be an outcome that I think we would all be proud of, to know that every single weekend night, our young people had a great place to hang out geographically, distributed throughout the city. Because Rick is correct, all the members are correct. You can't expect a young person from one part of town, even with Councilman Chenier's RT idea, you know, to get to a place in another part of town. It just doesn't always happen that way. So that's what I'd like to bring back here. That would be dynamic and sustaining. Thank you. Councilmember Ashby?
It's more of an offer to you, Mayor.
Yeah, I'll take it.
And it doesn't have to happen now, and it doesn't need to be in this budget, but we ought to look at what it would be like to merge Thousand Strong with my Yak program.
Okay.
Because if those two went citywide, first of all, there could be some probably shared funding. There are 750 kids in my youth program, and we figured out how to add a workforce development component to that. And you have figured out the partnerships for employment and citywide components. Might be an opportunity over the next year to look at how those two would merge, and then other districts could take advantage of that same type of program. They're just, the program has always succeeded because it has additional funding from District One, but if we merged it with your citywide effort, then I think other districts could plug in.
Maybe it's something positive we can work on together. So look forward to that conversation. Okay. Shannon, thank you. Great discussion. The report is received and filed, and the afternoon meeting of the city council is adjourned. We do need to take 10 minutes, apparently, to reconfigure the cameras or do something. I don't know. But we're going to be adjourned, and we'll come back in 10 minutes. All right?